I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, June 15th. And if we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Republic for which it stands.
Republic for which it stands.
Under God.
One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would just like to say on an invocational note that it's been one heck of a year and a half. And fortunately, our city and our residents of Avalon, so many of us survived. And we're sorry for the one loss we had in Avalon. But I thank God and I thank the people of Avalon for taking the virus seriously and doing their best to keep their families safe. And I look forward, and we all look forward to what lies ahead through this busy summer. We hope for peace. And we hope for prosperity for businesses and employees as well as the city. Thank you. And Denise, are you going to do roll call?
I'm going to try. Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Here.
Member Ponce?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hindi Magugan Cassidy? Mayor Marshall?
Here. What, did you forget our names already?
Static getting cut out, so.
So are there any announcements or written communications on your behalf, Denise?
Yes, I have some written communications. I have three for item number seven, two for one against, and I have three for item number eight, two for and one against.
Okay, thank you.
And you have all received those via email.
Yes. Okay, and there are department head reports.
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works, got three items to report out. We want to announce that we did a, last week, Public Works relocated a sizable amount of accumulated cobble at the seawall on Middle Beach to accommodate both more people down at that lower beach without having to stumble over the rock. And then also that cleared out our storm drain that was, our opening of the storm drain right next to the pier. So this Friday, Chuck Martin is rounding up some volunteers to assist Public Works for the final hand pickup of the remaining rocks. Public Works will assist with the equipment. And so if everybody please join us down there, it's a pretty easy effort, you know, to go there and pick up some rocks and get them into the front loader bucket so we can get them and relocate those. We did schedule initially at 7:30. We're trying to move that to 8:30, Chuck. So 8:30 to 10:30, right there in Middle Beach, you'll have lots of fun with us. Mole phase two tomorrow at the planning commission, city staff will make, will start working with design concepts with the commission for mole phase two. So tune in on that. Still a lot of work to do on that to get it to ready for the RFP so that we can go out to the final design. Saltwater outages. So we've had, you know, several saltwater outages recently due to ruptured service lines. And due to the location of these leaks, we've had somewhat large outages on the saltwater in the middle of the day. So I just want to remind people that you can still have service of your toilet if you just add fresh water to the tank. So that's, that's really the easy fix in the interim whenever we do have that saltwater outage there. Any questions?
No, I think we're good. Council, we're good? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Oren Karstafen, Harbor Master. Today, June 15th, was the last day of our shoulder rates, and now we have moved into the summer rates which are paid daily. Last weekend, we saw an outstanding Saturday for boating with spectacular weather for the weekend as many came out and enjoyed Avalon, swelling the moorings to the point that we overflowed into Descanso Bay. Here are the numbers arriving Friday, Saturday through Sunday. Patrol, more than 300 boats for a total of 792 nights. On average, we believe our mooring usage is about up 7.5%. At this time, my main focus is getting our fleet of patrol boats in a condition for the upcoming July 4th holiday. Unfortunately, Memorial Weekend and the high use of our fleet of patrol boats that were working pretty much 24/7 really showed the effects of the rollbacks that we, you know, had just a short time ago. So like I say, we're trying to bring the fleet back up to a standard where we can keep them running. We're looking at a pay by phone option. We've been working on this for about a month now. And the pay by phone option for credit card customers, which will be implemented soon, will allow the new and repeat customers the choice to pay their mooring fees on a fully automated dedicated line. And we hope that this line will enhance the options available to the boating public while reducing the number of man hours spent making these collections. Update on the mole crane, we had to push back the finish date of that refurbishment till June 25th due to parts that are being, are very difficult to find for the winch itself, the winch motor. So we're working on that. And I know everybody's been wondering about the harbor sanitation workers. We, we have three that are working now, so we're on very limited status, but we do have harbor sanitation. And especially now that school will be out, will be, you'll be seeing them during the week as well as on the weekends. And that's all I have. Is there any questions? Thank you.
I think we're good. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, city staff. Couple weeks, two weeks ago, went over town for fireworks training, safety class. My first year being in charge of the fireworks, so I went down to the big A at Angel Stadium, the Rivals. And Orange County Fire Authority put on a great fire safety class, what to look for, what to check for, pre-fireworks show, and how to go through the fireworks permit. Hamilton Cove calls actually weren't false alarms. We had two since the last council meeting where one was, they had a water leak up high, made its way down, the guys entered, had that real strong electrical smell, and it sent just enough smoke to the detector to alert, to set the alarm off. And the guys went and caught, and were able, caught it super early. And then yesterday morning, someone went to preheat their oven without checking and almost started one in the oven because there was some stuff in the oven.
Wow.
So that was two legit ones. Let's see. We did about 15 to 20 people for CPR classes, and we'll have more scheduled. We haven't put them up yet. I'd like to welcome our new reserve, Mike Garcia. He's a hard, full-time or part-time harbor patrolman, joined recently the reserves last week. There's also another couple that I have coming to observe drills. And then Matt Lutton of Baywatch Avalon and his partner. Matt's an instructor for Marine firefighting class. And so they brought over a burn boat. And for three days, I had, I was lucky enough, we had each shift get to go out and train on Marine firefighting. It's not a big boat. Let's see. So there's the, there's the first day. And then that's, that's the boat. It's not much. It's not like a huge, big ripping fire, but it at least gets us out there in our turnout gear, in our, on air, moving around. We fill the boat with water, and then the guys climb over and practice, practice being on a boat filled with water to be careful. And then we also practice some things with the big deck gun on how to push the boat away from the fuel dock or push the boat out, away from harm's way if we have to, if we can't grab it. So we had those. These are the Harvard Department, Oren and Paul came out and they, they got to work their pump a little bit, but we had county fire. And then we also did it one night with our reserves. So it was at least four, four days of firefighting training for the guys.
That's excellent.
And then other than that, I have, we've been working real hard on trying to keep the fire lanes clear. Like I said, Pebbley Beach Road, Sumner Crescent, trying to keep it clear so we're able to get down there. The fire department has ordered a ticket machine so when code's off at night, a lot of people have get, been getting away with a lot of things lately. So now we're going to be able to at night help, hopefully alleviate, help alleviate that problem.
Yeah, great. Good. Any questions? He did have pictures of them in the, in the red zones and whatever. So it has, it's been, they've been very abusive of those fire lanes. So thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of council. Joe Badali, LA County Sheriff Captain here at Avalon. Our passenger ferries are at full capacity now, and we can anticipate an increase in our already busy time of year, which is great. We also have experienced an increase for calls for service in the sheriff's station with alcohol-related incidents being our, still our biggest issue. We are preparing for the upcoming Fourth of July weekend with an increase in scheduling of staff, both for the parade as well as for the fireworks and the increased crowd and tourists we expect that weekend as well. Along the issues of training, we have made arrangements with the Catalina Express where sheriffs, city fire, and county fire will do a joint training on one of their vessels here at the mole. And so we got that anticipated and scheduled, as well as our city active shooter training. We're going to put on calendar and host that as well. So any questions of me?
Any questions of the captain? No? Not, not this evening? Thank you very much. You may have something later, though. Thank you, Joe.
Evening, council. I don't have anything to add for the finance department other than the budget presentation tonight, but if you have any questions, I'm here for them. Thank you.
Okay, and Assistant City Manager?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, members of council. Have a couple of quick updates. The first update that I want to provide everyone is a, on behalf of the city of Avalon, we want to extend our thanks to Congressman Loenthal. Last week, the city was invited to participate and provide testimony to the U.S. House of Representatives Subcommittee on Water, Oceans, and Wildlife. They were holding an oversight hearing to discuss the DDT issue off in the San Pedro Basin, and the city was specifically requested. We've been working with Loenthal and his office staff, and they wanted to get more of a local perspective on that, and so the city was able to participate on there. We will continue to follow up with that, and we are coordinating with our legislative partners at both the state and federal level to continue to keep in communication and to coordinate as this issue continues to manifest in terms of developing some strategies, grabbing our head around the extent of the issue, and then coming together for that. And then I also wanted to extend a deep appreciation and thanks to Assemblymember O'Donnell. This week, the city also was able to follow up to a previous testimony and provide testimony at the California State Center's Environmental Quality Committee. They heard an Assembly Joint Resolution, AJR 2, at the state level, basically committing the state's commitment and advocacy for moving forward with the DDT-related issue as well. And so there's definitely a lot of interest and movement. There's a lot of moving pieces on that, and they're keeping the Catalina Island firmly, firmly in partnership with, with those efforts. So that was the, the second thing. And then also, as many people already know, at midnight, California lifted most of its pandemic restrictions. This means a lot of the state rules on physical distancing and capacity limits at various locations such as restaurants and bars and supermarkets, gyms, museums, et cetera, have been rescinded. In many cases, masks are no longer mandated for vaccinated people in many settings, although there are still a number of measures that are in place. One of them is with the LA County Health Officer Order. They've rescinded a lot and are aligned with the state. However, there are a few protocols, reopening protocols that are remaining in place. These mainly pertain to reopening for day camps overnight organized and children's camps, protocols for K through 12 schools, and exposure management plans for K through 12 as well. There are some masking requirements that are still in place as well. Right now, the California, or Cal OSHA's Occupational Safety and Health Standards Board will be meeting on the 17th to discuss masking requirements for businesses. They, depending on what they come to, if they come to a decision on the 17th, nothing will be implemented until the 28th. So while we are awaiting that decision, they have reinstated their previous ruling back in November of 2020, so those standard, those masking standards still apply. And that basically states that in many indoor locations in businesses where employees are not vaccinated, were vaccinated or not, that they have to wear a mask. And if they're outdoors and engaging with the public or not able to physically distance, they'll also need to wear a mask. And so anyone has any questions, we'll make sure that this information gets posted to our website, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions of Michael? Okay, City Manager, did you have anything else to report?
We have nothing to add, Annie.
Okay, City Attorney?
Yeah, two things. First, if my guests can turn on their cameras. So joining us today in the meeting is our summer associate class. We have four summer associates from Best, Bestin, Krieger, who are watching the council meeting tonight. So there are Carlos Valenzuela, Jovan Wiggins, Adriana Castro, Christina Lee. And so they are watching this as part of their experience as to what a city attorney does, or in my case, what the city attorney shouldn't do. So they'll be watching the meeting tonight. So welcome to Avalon. Some of them have actually been to Avalon, so it's, it's a good time for them to see kind of a different side. The other thing I have is an announcement that in the state's order, they did extend the relaxed rules for Brown Act meetings until the end of September. So we are still able to have these meetings without the posting at each and every location for Brown Act meetings at least through September. And as I've previously indicated, there's some legislation making its way through. There are three bills right now that deal with making the, the kind of Zoom protocols permanent with various things, and we're waiting to see which one of those passes. But these meetings in some form or another will continue. We're just looking to see what the state does. So with that, I have nothing else.
Very good. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it. Okay, and all of you that want to be attorneys, good luck in your profession, and municipal government is the way to go. Right? Okay, Scott. Perfect. Okay. Councilmember reports.
Just a couple of things from me. Attended the quarterly cruise ship meeting and the Catalina Tourism Authority Board meeting this past session. Also attended the Sea Level Rise presentation that was done, and that was phenomenal to watch and see what the options are that they're looking at, and encouraging to know that we have that on the books so that when funding becomes available from different entities, we're able to go after it immediately and don't have to wait. Also, will be attending on the 28th meeting with the LA and Orange County Broadband Consortium and some associated members of the community that will be looking at future movement for improvements to the island, including the undersea cable infrastructure. So.
So at one point, there was a comment that they, the undersea cable was a dead issue, but it really isn't because if they know the lanes in which they've been trumped in that DDT, there's other parts of the ocean, right?
There, the consensus right now is that it's still a viable issue. The next step, if it's to happen from any entity, is to do a feasibility study. The feasibility study includes looking at access points both on the mainland and on the island to run the cable. Unknown to us and under study right now, there were a couple of previous very light level studies done that determined locations both out of Los Angeles Harbor, coming through Long Beach actually, through the Long Beach Harbor port. So they didn't have to go, they already would have been off land and into the water next to some of the port properties that are there that are not going to be impacted as much as a place like a tidal land would be or something else like that, a shipping lane instead of a tidal land. There also is one location apparently in Orange County that may be an option as well. So we're checking to see if we can build off of that previous report and/or use some of that information to make this next report less expensive and quicker.
Yeah, excellent. Cool. Thank you.
Lisa, when did you say was the next meeting?
I'm sorry, you said, yeah?
What was the date for that meeting?
It's the 28th, and so I'll be in attendance. I've asked Jim Lutjehan to also attend. And then we'll report back to the, the connectivity group the following week during the next meeting. And then if there's anything to report, we'll report it at the next city council meeting.
Thank you.
You got it.
And I attended Cal City's LA Division meeting, and then the next day, attended Cal City's Policy Committee meetings all day long. They're very, they're very interesting and very informative as you get opinions from other council people throughout the state. So it's doing good work.
Thank you.
I will note that during that Cal City's meeting, Michael brought to the state treasurer, it was her in attendance, Michael brought to her attention the special circumstances of Avalon. So I thought that was a very positive contribution that Mike, Michael made to that meeting.
Great.
Thank you, Scott.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Hi there, I just have two things. And the first one is, on June 30th, I will begin my tenure as President of the Gateway Cities Council of Government, and I'm very excited to hold this prestigious position for the city of Avalon. And thank you to Councilmember Ponce, who held the seat as a board member prior, and for all your advocacy for the city as well. And then on a less positive note, I do want to take a moment to thank the community members who reached out after the last council meeting on taking the position I did, not wanting to increase the solid waste fees. This topic has consumed most of the past two weeks for me in discussions and for good reason. The city received over 300 comments from members of the public on this topic, although unfortunately, because they were not written and delivered to the city, not all of them counted. The city of Avalon did not receive regular trash pickup for several months when the pandemic began. This concern was conveyed and discussed with city staff on dozens of occasions by both myself and members of the community. The city did not receive credit or refund for services it had not received still to this day. Additionally, the contractor is still not performing the services 15 months later, including not sorting trash and not being open during the day as contracted. The hours of operation have not resumed full operation since March of 2020, and this is not the issue of staff, but, but very specifically a management issue. Avalon Environmental is responsible for ensuring staffing at a level to meet the contract, and they have not done so. Using the pandemic as an excuse to furlough employees when they were being paid full contracted rate is thievery. Not only should the city receive credit for services not received, our residents should not be incurring increases to solid waste fees. I wholeheartedly stand behind the staff themselves that they are working the best they can with the resources they have. My issue is with the company and management, and it can't be swept under the carpet. The city council should seriously look at bringing this contract back to the public for review. Additionally, instead of always raising rates and saying, well, that's just what we have to do, we as a council should be fighting for our community and finding ways to lower the cost of the service itself. And one such example might be to reduce the residential pickup to one day per week at certain times of the year and save the cost of those services and those that need additional receptacles work through that. There's other ideas, and we should discuss those ideas, but I'll save that for the time that we bring the contract back to the city council. But I wanted to say my piece on the subject and stand up for those of us who disagree with those fees being raised in answer to why I felt that way, and thank you to those of you in the public who support me on this topic. I very much have appreciated it. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay. And I just want to report minutes with the mayor tomorrow at 4 o'clock, so I hope to see you then. Oral communication, this is an opportunity from people in the community to discuss items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken.
Annie, may I share my bit?
Oh, I'm sorry. I am sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, quick. I just wanted to let you all know that I had mentioned those gift cards, and we finally were able to distribute them this past weekend. Fortunately enough, we were able to help a lot more families that were anticipated, and it was $25,000.
Wow.
That's it for me.
That's excellent. Thank you. Okay, oral communication? Is there anybody on the, on your machine?
I have one that's come through electronically. The comment comes from Jim Lutjehan. He writes, "I would like to thank the many members of the public, both the residents and visitors, including Councilmember Michael Ponce, Assistant City Manager Michael Palmer, and Herlinda Chico of Supervisor Janice Hahn's office, who joined the 2021 Catalina Pride Walk. It was a wonderful time for all, and many pedestrians we encountered along the way were very supportive." I am particularly... I am particularly happy with the number of youth who joined us, some traveling from camps on the west end of the island to participate. Also, thank you, city of Avalon, for allowing the hanging of the pride flag at the Wrigley Stage, and to Catalina Island Company for illuminating the casino in rainbow colors. Next year, we hope to make it an all-day affair. Jim Lutjehan, President and CEO. Love Catalina, Catalina Island Tourism Authority."
Great. Was it well-attended?
For being the first pride parade walk here on the island.
It was good. Didn't we have one last, we had a little one last year, I think?
Well, they did a golf cart parade that kind of happened at the last minute.
Oh, uh-huh.
And so there were like three, three golf carts and the sheriff's department.
Yeah.
And the one that happened before was more of, it was more of a private event.
Oh, okay.
But this is our first official where, where the chamber in the city got the message out that we were going to be doing this.
Yes, excellent.
And then Herlinda Chico also came over and gave us a proclamation from Supervisor Hahn. So it was, it was, it was good. It was good to see the support.
Yeah.
And, yeah, it was, it was, it was a nice first pride walk.
Yeah, excellent.
And we're hoping to expand that in future years.
Definitely. Well, great. Okay. Consent calendar.
We have five items on the consent calendar this evening. The first one is minutes from the June 1st, 2021 Regular City Council Meeting. The second one is to adopt the city of Avalon Volunteer Program Policy and adopt a resolution providing for workers' compensation coverage for certain volunteers pursuant to Section 3363.5 of the Labor Code. The third one is to adopt a resolution adopting a list of projects for fiscal years 2020 through '21 and 2021 to '22. Sorry. Did that wrong. Funded by SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. The fourth one is to authorize the city manager to terminate the existing lease with the tuna club and execute a new lease with the requested revised terms. The fifth one is to adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year '21-'22 miscellaneous fee schedule, which was approved at the last city council meeting.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Sorry, can I actually pull item two?
Yes, I'd like to pull two, and, and item four as well, the tuna club lease, just with a question or so, because I know we have members of the tuna club here today. So do we want to make a motion for the others from one, three, and five?
Yeah, I'll make that motion for, to approve items one, three, and five.
I'll second.
Okay.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Okay, item two. Lisa, did you want to ask your question or make your comment?
Yes, item two. I was just hoping to direct or ask city staff and council. The stipulations regarding both the length of the application to be a volunteer are quite long, and also the requirements of previous criminal history disclosure. I understand why in certain instances we would want to have that for volunteers, depending on the type of volunteer position. I'm wondering if we can create a tiered volunteer system to allow for, I don't know, maybe a proportional response level of application. The volunteer application that I'm thinking of is literally you volunteer to do a cleanup, you sign your name and maybe give your email and phone number, and you sign a waiver, and then you're covered. This is multiple pages and requires like work history and your first drawn, you know, blood draws and your child and all kinds of fun stuff. It's, it's quite in-depth, and I think a bit of an overkill for wanting to have volunteers help out with things.
Oh, Lisa? And both of the issues that you mentioned were on my list.
Yes.
A background check for, I mean, it's just crazy. I understand it's all about ParsAC, and I know Denise, we've asked to be able to have a volunteer program, but this takes the volunteer fun out of anything, I think.
So I know we had talked to Denise about doing that. I just wanted to ensure that the council was okay with that request to move forward with doing those types of things.
And I understand where you're coming from, but if you read the summary...
In the instance of somebody coming to volunteer and, you know, do a cleanup at the city, they would just do a simple release of liability.
Right.
But the ones that are continually coming to volunteer, like for school sports programs, and they're always around.
And to volunteer with children or other programs. Yes, those make sense to me.
Because, because in the report summary itself, it explains that it's for that type of thing, not just the regular...
It just seemed that there was even for the level of what we were asking the volunteers to fill out for the simple. Even then, having, there was something on there that I thought was, I was concerned about the, the attachment D being a part of the simple. Was that not true? Was I misreading it?
Attachment D.
My, my question was basically that they're not having to go through that check before they can volunteer for something. Generally, a volunteer thing is being coordinated and possibly people showing up the day of.
Right.
So are we turning people away because they either won't answer the question or choose not to from a volunteer?
But I think it all depends on what type of volunteering they're doing.
Right. I'm, I'm talking about the simple level. So I'm just saying, can we make sure to determine which of those fall under which categories? If that is approvable, then I would say we can move forward.
Yes, we can do that. This is part of the overall program, and then there are different forms for different volunteer activities. And we can make certain that, that we, that we differentiate between certain activities and others that, you know, the limited ones that do require a more vigorous background check.
Sure.
I mean, I don't even think it's that difficult to apply for a job with the city of Avalon.
It's about the same, I think, yeah.
You know, I mean, to me, it's way, I mean, I don't imagine who we're even, even thinking of.
Annie, if, if with Rotary, if anyone deals with children, we all have to go through a program.
Right. Oh, I get that.
So it, it, I mean, it's all...
It makes sense. It's just the level of where it makes sense is what I was questioning more than anything.
I know. Yeah. Okay. I mean, I guess this is what we have to do, and if we want to have insurance or coverage on them if they get injured on the job or something.
The worker's comp coverage.
It's just a lot, yeah.
Yeah. So with that, I would say we can move forward with approving, with, I'll make a motion to approve item two.
I'll second it. Call for the vote?
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. And item number four, I guess this is a question for Matt or Denise, either one, because I don't recall. Are we basically mirroring the tuna club lease with the yacht club lease in terms of the 20-year lease with the two 10-year extensions?
No, Mayor, we are not. They are similar in many ways, but no, they are not identical.
Is this a longer lease?
The yacht club lease, I'm unsure what year we amended theirs, but I know that we should be amending theirs in the very near future.
Well, didn't we do the yacht club through 2061 or something like that?
We did, but we're working with the yacht club right now on some other items that will trigger amendment to their contract, their lease.
So why would, would we not want to have them both on the same page?
They're two separate leaseholders, Annie. They, they should not be combined or considered the same. They're two different entities. They're two different leases.
I know, but the extension of time. I don't know why the extension of times would be different. They all, both agents, both of them make, make improvements to their facilities. They both work on piling. They, you know, I just don't know why it wouldn't be the same timeframe, but...
Annie, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sammy?
You're talking to me? Yes?
Yes. If I, if you had given me a heads up, I would have had it next to you. Now, you could have compared the two clubs side by side. But back in 2012, I think it was, that we did try to make them for their time length was exactly the same or very, or within a couple of years of each other.
Okay. And then in terms of the, the, okay, so as we, then the CPI adjusted, some that is being paid is $3,400, so that's similar to what we're doing with the yacht club as well, where we put it up to what it really is now, and then going forward with CPI, correct?
The CPI is definitely the same. There might be an exact amount that the yacht club is being asked to donate, but as I said, Annie, I don't have that in front of me to compare that.
Okay.
Is there something you want to hold over to compare the two?
Well, I don't necessarily want to hold that over, but I mean, I would like to think that the length of time is similar, you know, not 20 years difference for one than the other. And I'm sorry, I didn't do my homework and look that up. So I apologize.
From what I, from what I recall, Annie, the length of times are very similar.
Okay, okay. And, and then there's, just for the public, we still have, just like with the yacht club, we have the ability to maybe do, use, use the facility for some community thing or whatever going for it in, in the back of the, I don't know who Eric is, and I don't know who the two gentlemen are. Oh, okay. But, you know, to be used, as they have let it be used with the hospital and different organizations in the past to have some kind of access on times when they're not open. Okay. So, all righty. So I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
I'll second.
Okay.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. Okay. Thank you.
All righty. We have some people. Is it okay if I move the, move the agenda around just a little bit and talk about item eight, the hero pay, so I know, because I know we have people in the audience? Is that okay? All right.
You're the mayor.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so well, item is, item for discussion is hero pay for Vons Grocery Store employees.
And I'm sorry, would it, would it be okay if we took all three of those other items first and then did the budget last? Because I know we have people probably in the audience for the outdoor dining as well.
Yeah, I think one person. But yes. So we'll, let's do item eight, and then we'll go to item seven.
Okay. Annie, this one was brought to us at the request of a council member, and so I think the staff report lays out a quick summary of it, but Scott Campbell, we've been asked questions about the legality of it, and so I'm going to have Scott Campbell weigh in, please.
Okay. Take away, Scott.
Yeah, I would just note that the ordinances that have been enacted in the past, our office has handled the lawsuits on the challenges to those ordinances, and we've been successful so far in those ordinances, upholding them. Those ordinances are a little bit different than what we have right now, so I just wanted to go through. They were adopted when the vaccine was not widely available, adopted when there was the definition of essential workers. That, with the governor's revise, he basically eliminated the category of essential workers. And that was also adopted when the infection rates were substantially higher than they are right now. So there are different factual circumstances existing now than there were when these, the other ordinances were adopted. Most of those ordinances that were adopted have now expired. They were for limited terms. So most cities have, have had this through the quote surge, and now don't have them. Having said that, though, it's up to the council to go forward, and if you decide to go forward with this, we will bring an ordinance back that will put you in the best possible position in case it is challenged.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. Is, because we're, we're late to the ballgame on this. Is there any way to go, what's the word, to go back?
Retractive.
Yeah, to go retroactive. Has that been anything that has happened?
No.
Okay. And...
I mean, not that I know of. And, and the, I spoke with the litigator who worked on the case. He's three offices down from me from early today.
Okay. And is there some end, end where it's moot, like we couldn't say, oh, give hero pay through December of this year? I mean, at some point, it would have to end. Is there a logical end date to it based on the reopening of everything, including Vons?
That's up to each individual city to determine. Long Beach's ordinance is no longer in effect because of the reopening. Most, I think there's one other, West Hollywood, I think, has another week to go. But it's up to each individual city to put a limit on it. Most of them put a 60 or 90-day limitation. Most of those have, have expired or are expiring. And as a result of that, some of the legal challenges to the lawsuits have been dropped because the ordinance that they were challenging are no longer in effect.
Okay. All right. So those are just my two questions for now. Yessenya, did you want to comment?
I do. I knew that, I was the one that asked to put it on here. I, I knew that this was going to be a tough conversation, and there are genuine concerns, you know, that we should address or are addressing now. But I just want to make sure, you know, that the Vons workers know, we always say how much we appreciate them, you know, we bang the pots and pans for them every night. So I feel like the least we could do is put this on the agenda for them. And that's why I had requested it.
Does anybody have a comment or whatever?
I just have a little bit of comment that, oh, I'm sorry. Did I lose you? Sorry about that.
You're good.
Just that, you know, I'm, my number one biggest worry is if, if the city council puts this in place, then we, and it is a lawsuit comes to us, we can't handle that. We absolutely cannot take on any more legal fees. No offense, Scott, but we just can't absorb any more fees against the city. And, you know, this is something that, in, in my opinion, is a little bit out of our bailiwick in the sense that, you know, these employees are in a union. They have, their labor and wage is negotiated, and, you know, I don't know how much they went through the union for this, but it's really not a council decision. And my fear is that we come in and say, you know, the city council thinks you need to do this, and it turns out that you really can't do that, and then we incur all these legal fees. I mean, it just, and, and the precedent that that sets for the other employers on the island. So, I mean, I, I of, very few people can also say that I got up every morning and went to work during the pandemic. And, you know, it was, it was hard. It was very emotional. It was scary. Nobody knew what was going to go on. Nobody knew if the $5 bill that somebody was handing you was going to get you sick or not. I mean, there's, there's so many people who were affected by this that were frontline employees. And I'm scared to, to make that decision to say, we should do this, one for the, you know, one for the concern of the legal fees, and second, how does this, what does this say to the rest of the people who are out there working as well? So those are my concerns with it. It has nothing to do with any individual or the work that any of any human did to work during this time. I mean, it was definitely difficult for everybody.
And when you, when you talk about the lawsuit, Scott, is that like Albertson's doing, giving, doing a lawsuit against whatever, or is that like Kroger? I mean, who were, who were putting forward the lawsuit?
The lawsuits were put forward by Kroger, Albertson's, all the grocery chains bonded together and filed... together and filed the lawsuit in this case, as it was the California Uniteers, California Grocers Association, so it was funded by all the grocery stores, and they filed lawsuits, were handling lawsuits in California and Washington right now, and so they're active lawsuits all around, but again, most of those ordinances have expiration dates that have, you know, the provisions have come to an end. There's one ordinance that was challenged, the judge took it under submission, and the ordinance expired before the judge could make a determination. So, but in those cases where the judges have issued orders, we've been successful in those cases. And again, as I said, we could be successful here, but the conditions are different on the ground than they were when the other ordinances were passed earlier this year during the spike in cases.
We've got some Vons employees in the audience, does anybody want to come up and make a comment? Sure.
So, hi, my name is Amanda Dougal, and I have worked at the Vons Market for 14 months. I've collectively lived here for approximately 12 years, currently I'm going on three and a half. There's never been a day that I have not had to wear a mask since I've been working for Vons. With this being said, I have had many, many, many interactions with customers refusing to wear a mask. I personally have been cussed out, called names, and have almost gotten into altercations because I just kindly asked somebody to put a mask on. I didn't want to be a person who brought COVID home, my husband's elder, and it would just be the death of me if I brought that home, and he passed because of it. Let's see. During the pandemic, we, Vons, was the only place to shop for food and supplies, and many times during this, we had so many people come to our store, we are crowded with people that refused to wear a mask and never socially distanced themselves. We, Vons, employees have had to clean up the store of chewed gum, half-eaten food, apple cores, cherry and fruit seeds, all of which have been in the mouths of people we don't know. We don't know if they've had the COVID, we don't know if they currently had it, we don't know if they are wearing their masks or washing their hands properly. I believe that we deserve hero pay, just like LA City, LA County, Montebello, Irvine, Coachella, Pomona, Long Beach, West Hollywood, Oakland, Berkeley, and Alba Hama. We, as a team here at Vons Market, have worked diligently, day in and day out, to keep our town a safe place to visit, and I ask all of you to please, please, please pass the hero pay for the grocery workers here at the Vons Avalon Market. We work day in and day out to make it so the town has a market, so people can come in and make it friendly. Just please, please pass this.
Thank you, Amanda. And if anybody else wants to speak, I need to remind you, you're limited to two minutes. Anybody else? Anybody in the?
I do have one comment that's coming through electronically. This comment comes from Micah Phillips, he writes, "Madam Mayor, members of the council are essential workers that put their lives on the line to provide basic needs to the community and have made, and have been made enforcers to an often hostile public. Last year, we called them heroes and beat pots and pans to show our appreciation. I'm sure that this was appreciated, but if we really believe that they are heroes and are thankful for their service, an extra $5 an hour for 120 days is the least we can do. I urge the council and mayor to show true appreciation over empty gestures and push for hero's pay, because they truly are that, heroes." Thank you, Micah Phillips, 318 in Metropole.
Thank you, Micah. This is a tough one, kind of like what Cindy says, I mean, our city workers went to work every day, and, you know, not as many people definitely as they had in Vons, but it was, it wasn't easy for anyone, including our own employees, and I know, you know, we had employees that weren't even getting paid, you know, they were on furlough, they weren't making any money, and they would have been happy to have a job full-time, I think, but, so, it's kind of a tough one for me, and I guess I would have a tough time figuring for how long and for how much, but that could be discussed if we want. Go ahead, Margie.
Hi, Annie. Good evening, council, Marjorie Wall. There was a time where businesses weren't open, and Vons was the only ones open. I mean, the whole town was shut down, everybody would go to the store just to have something to do. So, therefore, everybody was packed in there, it was like, you know, like the place to go, because there was nowhere else to go. So, not only did it make it a lot more people, it made it a lot more dangerous, okay? And I believe also, too, that there is no, the time limit has not ran out on this, according to our union, and so, we are here to ask that you guys support us in our hero pay. I mean, it's just, we were there day in and day out, and Cindy, I know you were too, but, you know, your four or five employees, you know, and by the way, your store is gorgeous. I think this has to do with, you have to have so many employees for you to even get the hazard pay, period.
Yes.
So, I just really think that we did a fantastic job, I mean, and we were there every day, and like everybody else, I guess, that was working was there, but, I mean, on Catalina Island, we were the only place open, we were the only ones that were putting up with all the snot-nosed kids and all the people that just wanted to go there because, you know, and in the time, we had no idea what was going on, we didn't know if, who had what, or, we were all unsure about everything that was going on in that time.
Right.
But we still were there, day in and day out.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I remember telling the people that going to Vons is not an outing, you know, leave your kids at home, or leave them in the car, or do something, but don't bring them all into Vons.
No, it was a place to go, like you were going to the park or something, because it was the only place open. Therefore, we were subjected to a lot more than anybody.
Yes, okay.
So, I don't believe the time has run out yet, and if you guys would support us in this, I mean, I think that would be appreciated. I mean, and we still work hard for you, we're still the only store, and I know everybody else works hard too, but Vons is a tough job.
Yes.
It really is.
Okay.
So, anyways, if you would, we'd appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Any comments on your machine?
I did receive.
David Casada, also on Zoom, that would like to speak.
Okay. Well, let's get David on now, then, and then we'll take the one on the computer.
Good evening, mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, mayor, council, and staff, thank you. And mayor, I wanted to thank you for also moving this up to the first agenda item, because I know a lot of the workers that are there have already worked an eight-hour shift or 12-hour shift, so, you know, for them to show up there, it just kind of shows you how important this issue is, right? So, a lot of the people, a lot of people that are out there, these are your bakers, your butchers, your checkers, your florists, I mean, this is kind of like a microcosm of what a community or a small town is, right? So, really important, and I myself was a grocery worker for 25 years, so, you know, I personally know the stresses, what the grocery workers went through with this pandemic. On the island, very lucky that there was no deaths, but in LA, that I also represent, there was deaths, we were focusing on getting members tested, vaccinated, guiding our members also through the chaotic, crazy system of, you know, leave of absence for people that didn't have daycare because the school was shut down. So, last year, from the start of the pandemic, grocery workers had been put through so much stress and anxiety, starting with the panic buying, wiping the shelves clean, forcing workers to work on overdrive to make sure that the community had the basic essentials. While so many people had the luxury of working from home, grocery workers had to endure the stresses and the fears of not knowing whether they were going to get sick at work. So, you know, cities are still adopting the hero pay, hazard pay. Burbank was the last city to adopt this, I believe it was a couple of weeks ago, they've only adopted it for 60 days instead of the 120 days. I know the city of Oxnard did something different, they used the federal stimulus money and granted the grocery workers a one-time $1,000 bonus. So, this is still very much in the forefront, it's still happening, I know the, you know, the city ban, or not the city ban, but the mask mandate is being lifted, but this is still much an issue. So, thank you, mayor, and council members, please vote to pass hero pay.
And thank you, David. So, are you part of the union?
I am, I am a union representative, and again, I worked for the grocery business for 25 years, I worked for Albertson's, and the last two years, I started working for the union, and so now I represent workers.
Okay, excellent, okay, I just wanted to make sure for?
I have a question for David. David, it's my understanding that the labor union did not go and negotiate with Vons, but just brought this item to the city council. Is that a true statement?
That is true, like all the other cities that enacted hero pay, you're right, we didn't go to the, just like the minimum wage passes, you guys decide whether, you know, that wage increases, you guys have the same power now, you guys can give a temporary appreciation pay to the workers. I don't know if that answers your question, sorry, Cindy.
Sorry.
And then, David, this is councilmember Lavelle, would you be able to speak to what hero pay previously was already paid to Vons workers and/or any other bonuses that were provided throughout the pandemic?
My understanding was that there was a temporary $2 hero pay in the beginning of the pandemic, mind you, we had three waves of COVID, and the first wave, the company did give a $2 increase, and that was temporary, and that was taken away. Other companies, like Stater Brothers, were giving a bigger amount of hero pay for a longer period of time. So, yes, you know, the company did give hero pay for a short, short period of time, and that was only on the first wave of the pandemic, and then things progressively got worse. And that's why we wanted to go to the cities and ask for additional pay, or additional hazard pay.
Do you know how long that was for the $2? I'm just trying to gather notes, do you know how long that was for the two-hour pay?
You know, I don't know exactly how long, I'm thinking it was two months, but I can get back to you and give you an exact timeframe.
Okay.
Lisa, I can interject there, I had a similar question. The pay was for 16 weeks, it was from March through the end of June, and there were also appreciation bonuses, holidays, elevated sick pay days, just in case anybody needed to care for themselves or a family member, and there was grocery stipends and another appreciation pay, but I'm sorry, I didn't go further on that. So, I was going to ask that question of any of the Vons employees as well, aside from that $2 for the 16 weeks, what those other bonuses were.
Can anybody, Amanda, you want to come up?
I just want to say that I have been in the Vons Corporation for about 14 months, and the only quote-unquote appreciation pay that I received was a $200 check.
There was no addition to your paycheck?
There was no addition, there was nothing else, I just got a $200 check. I don't know about anybody else, but that was me personally, that, yeah.
Okay, can anybody else speak to that, that's sitting there from Vons? What you might have received or anything? No, going to bring Margie back up.
I remember that there was a $2 an hour more, but it didn't last long, it didn't last 16 weeks, nor did it last through June. No, I mean, it was for a very, very, very short time, and I wish I knew that too, but it wasn't very long. Does anybody know, does anybody know how long we got $2?
I was just curious what the timeframe was of closures versus?
Well, I mean, that was, and that was June 2020, so that was a year ago. Okay, and then we all, the pandemic came, you know, in the end of March, so we're looking at maybe six weeks, if it ended in June, so March, April, May, take two months or something, and that's, that's all I remember, but it wasn't, wasn't long.
Okay. Well, council, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, do you want me to read the electronic?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Did you get one more comment that came in? It's from Carl Johnson, he writes, "I do not agree or think that it's government's place to dictate how much a private business should pay their employees. If the state, city, or federal government subsidized the program in order to push the initiative, I'd be in favor of hearing out that proposal. However, I don't see that being the case, since the city is facing the same hardship as everyone else. There are more negatives versus positives that arise from demanding this action. First of all, this would set a standard going forward and set precedent, this scares me off, because it confirms that the freedoms we take for granted are being stripped away from us before our very eyes. I love that America promotes free enterprise and does not dictate decisions that should be on the employee-employer level. If you are employer in Avalon, you are deemed essential and have not suffered drastically like others, and you have not already had the discussion or enacted extra wages during extra trying times, then you should be ashamed of yourself, and I hope," I'll edit that. "Other problems with demanding private businesses to pay more would include increased food costs, which affects the increased cost of living, less jobs available, more stressed workers with longer job descriptions, and makes our city less livable. It does not look like this agenda item discussion is going to provide subsidies or encompass all workers that were deemed essentials, how would you expect private enterprise to take the full burden when it was government made the decision to shut down? Why delay government or businesses cover the costs associated with poor leadership? Lastly, I'd like to note that a large group of employees that will be discussed today are protected with a workers' union. Any business that has more than 25 employees must form a workers' union for their staff. These unions do an excellent job, they protect and stand up for employees when treated unfairly, and they understand the business needs, but they have to make concessions. I think this is the best route to take, and if it doesn't result in an increase of wages, then it would be thoroughly discussed among the affected parties and determined that it was not deemed unnecessary. If the results are still not satisfactory, then the union has the right to strike. The city couldn't handle a strike, because even if they brought over union workers from the mainland, they'd have no place to house them, nowhere to house them, because we're in the busy season, have pent-up demand, a bunch of ground to make up, not to mention hotels would look, would rather book with high-paying visitors, and wouldn't want to pinch pennies on housing agreement discussion with an employer that doesn't want to pay employees more. I strongly oppose dictating pay increases, but would instead rather set an expectation, provide incentive to opt-in and follow-up. Thanks, Carl Johnson, President, CEO, CJMH Group, Inc."
Thank you, Carl. Yesenia?
You know, my main concern is definitely the lawsuits and, you know, the different factors at this stage of the pandemic, but I do not want to take this chance away from the Vons workers just because everyone else hasn't been offered this hazard pay. I know that we can't help everyone, but it'd be better to help a couple people than none at all.
And so, what is the direction we want to provide to staff?
David, is David still on the line? From the union?
Yes, I'm on here.
David, if we don't pass a resolution tonight, what are the union's next steps? Do you continue trying to fight for this as the union representative for your employees? What happens next?
You know, I'd have to check with our political director, and we are going to the city, and, you know, this is not me, this is the workers that brought the hazard pay up, right? They call me, and they're like, hey, we deserve it. I know that the nurses, the cops, everyone deserves it, but these workers are standing up. But these work, these workers are standing up and they're going to the city council. This issue is important to them. So I know that everybody wants hero pay or hazard pay. But, you know, these workers are standing up and they've endured a lot. And chances are, if you guys don't pass it, there's probably, they probably won't pass. You know, yes, there's a contract and next year, we're going to negotiate another contract. By then, you know, the issues surrounding COVID are going to be gone. So, you know, we can't get that hero pay retroactively. So the chance is now.
And we're not, we're not voting on a resolution? We're giving direction to staff?
Right. So Scott, a question on the lawsuit. I mean, if, I'm thinking if I wanted to go forward this in any way, it wouldn't, it would not be $5 an hour and it would not be for 120 days. It might just be for 30. I'm trying to be kind of fair and at least show some support. So, but if we only did it for 30 days, and then I am concerned about the lawsuit. But in 30 days, the thing would expire before the lawsuit would take effect. So then it would fail, right?
Well, what, what happened is when Long Beach did its ordinance, they were served with a motion for a preliminary injunction to stop it right away. And that went into federal court immediately. And so that judge then, after some hearings, determined that the grocers had not shown that there was a reasonable chance of probable success. So, so he denied it. And then it goes to trial. And then what happened is by the time that it was ready to try the case, their, their ordinance had expired. I wanted to just make certain that we understand the process, that if, if there was direction to come forward with an ordinance, then we would prepare that ordinance on base, whatever council direction you give us, we will prepare an ordinance. And then we'd come to the next meeting. At that next meeting, it would be, if it's, we would actually prepare two ordinances. One ordinance would be a regular ordinance, which remember, you have a first reading. And then at the next meeting after that, you have a second reading. And then that ordinance goes into effect 30 days after. So you're really looking at a 40-day period before that ordinance is in effect. And you need three votes for that. To make an ordinance effective immediately, in other words, if you ask us to bring forth an ordinance next week that goes into effect right away, that's called an urgency ordinance. And there you need four votes for that to pass and go into effect immediately. So you give us direction, we will, we will come forward with an ordinance that is as strong as we can make it. Given, given what's going on today, again, the emergency order is, the governor's declaration of emergency is still in effect. Large parts of that have been eliminated. But if there's direction, we'll come forward and we'll give the option, whatever you want. But again, if you want to make it affect immediately, four votes. If you want it to go through regular process, first and second reading, and then it's effect 30 days later, three votes.
Okay. So then I, I guess I, I can't see where, where there is agreement. I don't want to waste city staff time and attorney time on something that's going to come forward and, and it'd just be dead. I mean, so I don't know how, I mean, like I'm, I'm willing to say I would be in favor of something short-term for something between the $2 and $5 range. But if there's not going to be at least three people that are for that, I don't want to waste anybody's time. And I don't know if I can even say that. And also, if you're talking 40 days, I don't know. Is that, can then Albertsons, Vons come back and say, hey, man, you know, this is so late in the game that it's not a hazard anymore. So, and then give us grief over that? I, that's what I don't know.
Well, that's what their argument would be.
That's what their argument would be.
I, I mean, that's, I, that's what their argument would be.
Yeah.
They're demanding you still wear masks.
Oh, she said they were, they're demanding that they still wear masks. Yeah.
Well, every employee still has to wear a mask when they're working in an establishment. It's everyone else that doesn't have to wear one. And I, I disagree with that, but I, I do, my opinion on it now is it's an employee's right to choose. If they feel that they're the only one in an establishment or that they're socially distanced, they, you know, should have the right to choose whether they need to wear a mask or not. When you get into situations where there's food supply issues, like what happened with, you know, Back East, and you have 300 employees that go out and it disrupts the whole food chain for the country, that's a different story. And I agree with having to wear a mask for that. That being said, I, I'm a little bit disappointed that the union representation did not take this to Vons before stepping out to the city council. That's, that puts an unfair burden on us that is really unfair because you have a union to be able to fight for, for your needs, to fight for what you want. And, and I, I just think it's unfair to bypass that and, and come looking for a government agency to make that decision. Second to that, I would like to know what the incentives really were because I had forgotten another one on here. That was possibly a $100 vaccination incentive. And, you know, as an employer, I wish that I would have thought of some of these incentives to be able to, to do more than what even I did as an employer. But this is, this is a lot. And I also, you know, setting the precedent, you know, I, I appreciate, Margie, you, you know, bringing us up that, you know, we were open every day. But there were a lot of others too. There was, you know, the workers for the school that, that still had to go to a place. Mind you, they didn't have people in person until recently. But in the beginning, we didn't know. And there were, look at, look at the Express employees. My goodness. The worst job a person can have right now is being a deckhand on an express boat. No offense to the Catalina Express, but they're getting fights picked, you know, people screaming at him, certainly the employees out at the mole as well. And, and I just really struggle with our role in this. And, and I, you know, adore every employee at Vons. And it has nothing to do with anything personally. But I, I appreciate what Carl's comments were that I really just don't believe that it was, it's our place, you know? And, and there's many, many more other people who were out there working and, you know, who were going through the exact same concerns that Vons were. I, I just, I just don't, I really truly don't believe it's the city council's responsibility to, the government agency to step in when the, the, the union hasn't even done their part yet.
Thank you for, thank you for your comment, Cindy. Or Amanda?
I would like to respond to this. During the pandemic, with the express boats, they cut back to two and three votes a day. We are still working six, 10, 14 days in a row. We're being yelled at. We're being talked down to. I, like I said earlier, I've almost gotten into physical altercations with like people touching a shoulder, like this is, I'm not doing this. We were there day in and day out, 24/7, seven days a week, 30, 31 days a month through this entire thing. We were not cut back our hours. We, we stood up. We, we took the bull by its horns and, and rode. That's all we, we have, you know? We weren't cut our hours. We didn't get a quote unquote winter break. We have been working day in and day out. And that is part of the reason why we were, we're here tonight is to say that, you know, we didn't get a break.
Right.
We, we didn't cut back like, like the express boats. Yes, they, they go through a bunch of crap as well. I get that. We do too, on a daily, everyday, hourly basis.
I'm hearing you-
Even to this day.
Yeah, I know. Hearing you loud and clear. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
And Cindy, I totally agree with you as far as a union not supporting us or misleading us, saying that it was you guys. Because that, from the very beginning, from the very four or five months ago when we started this, this war, not a war, but when we started this whole thing, the union said we had to go through you guys first before they could do anything else. And that's why we're here now fighting because they misrepresented us. And I'm really upset about that.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have more comments on your machine?
I received a duplicate comment from the Catalina Connect business, but it was the same one that Carl Johnson had submitted.
Sure. Okay.
Looks like David wants to make a comment again.
You know, I just wanted to highlight, you know, we spent a lot of last year working with OSHA, making sure that a lot of the safeguards that are in the store in regards to social distancing, you know, we were pushing, the companies did not want to provide, first of all, the companies did not want to let the workers wear a mask. We were pushing OSHA to mandate that, you know, the customers, the employees wear a mask. The Plexiglas that's in the stores, that was the union pushing OSHA to make sure that all these safety standards, not the companies, the union was pushing, you know? And again, there's a long list of cities that have adopted hero pay. And it took, you know, West Hollywood, which I also represent. The workers showed up to city council. The city council passed it overwhelmingly. So it depends on the city council. So it's, this is the workers against corporation, I mean corporate, right? So again, you stand with workers or do you stand with the company? That's really what it comes down to.
Yeah. And it is interesting, they were talking about the heavy profits that they made during that time because they were the only, only show in town. I know. So, okay. Well, thank you, David, again for your comments. Okay, I said what I said. I, I don't know.
I'm, I'm with you.
Okay. So I got one and two, probably Yesenia. Is this, is it legal to do this way? Okay. Yesenia, you're kind of in favor of bringing it back in an ordinance? Okay. Lisa?
I honestly, this has been a topic of discussion for me personally for a couple of months in trying to figure out how to manage this and what to do. I'm thankful for Councilmember De La Rosa for bringing it up for discussion. I still personally have a number of issues with it. The other cities that are being mentioned are not in the same state that Avalon is in. For us to treat our employees, our contracted employees, and the people who work for us wholly different than what we're wanting this, to do, what the union and the employees from Vons are wanting us to do for them, they absolutely deserve it. And David, I would argue wholeheartedly, for as long as you want, that it has nothing to do with choosing corporate over the workers. It has to do with the fact that they deserve pay. And they received pay that no one else in town actually got, with the exception of maybe, I think, Edison in the form of housing, where they had to sequester themselves.
And double pay.
Uh huh. But they deserve that pay. You, as their union representative, should be the one demanding that for them from the corporation. They should absolutely be getting that pay and you should be the one doing it. The challenge that we have is that a number of other cities have made this jump, a jump that I think is precedent testing on purpose. And that's great that it's precedent testing because maybe it means that cities can move forward with providing private entities with what their employees should be paid. I don't know that that's a good thing. Personally, I don't know that I agree with that. It's a challenging position for me to be in, being in both sides of business and as someone who supports workers.
I know.
It's a, it's a very challenging spot to be in. It is something that I think will be challenged for a number of reasons. I'm extremely curious to know why it is when it happened in one city, the union wasn't in every single city, doing it at the same time? What took so long? What were you waiting for? The challenge that I have right now is that I can't even offer this pay to people who work for us that are still furloughed. In other cities, they have not furloughed their employees to this level. They are not facing the budget shortfalls that we are. And we're better than we thought we were going to be. We actually have something in reserve this year that's coming up. But I, I can't, the challenge for me is the justification of putting the decision on the city that can't make the same decision for their employees and their contracted employees. And if we're looking at the size of the entity, then you're also looking at employers like Long Beach Unified, like the Sheriff's Department, like even the Island Company is close to the number of people that you're looking at for wanting to supply hero pay. And again, I don't disagree that those workers don't deserve it. They do. But there were significant payments made to Vons employees above other people. And that's why I'm asking kind of what those were. I have in my mind the timeframe in December of this past year up through the winter of this year where, having been approached prior to that and that shutdown happened again, I think I would have been in support of hero pay for that duration of time. I don't know if we can go retroactive. And that's, that's what I would think I would be in support of. But we weren't approached until well after that. Everything had reopened already. I don't know how to make, and this is when, this is when this conversation started, when I started trying to find out info and speak to people. So honestly, at this point, I mean, I think you may have three people that would be willing to do a shorter amount of hero pay, it sounds like. So I think you have enough direction to move forward with a regular ordinance, if you wanted to, for that resolution. I don't think, based on that, we have enough people to move forward with an emergency ordinance.
I don't either.
So, yeah. But I, you know, David, I gotta stand with Margie and say, you gotta do better, man. You guys have the ability to fight for your employees and you have the ability to do that all the time. And if it was something that was granted previously and the same conditions existed, you should have asked for the same for them automatically.
Okay. So this, you haven't really said anything, but so it looks like we may have consensus with three, bring it back, not as, not as an emergency ordinance, but it could come on the special city council meeting on the 24th. Our budget, same time as our budget meeting, correct? So that would be next week? And then, and then it would have to go to another, so that would be the first reading. And then we have a second, next reading at the next council meeting, correct? Denise?
Second reading would be-
July 1st?
July 6th. And again, during that time, we'll have what Cal OSHA says. So that may provide some clarity as well. But if direction is to go forward, what I need is, I need to know what the dollar amount is and how long? And, and is this just grocery workers?
I'm, I'm just throwing it out there, $3 and, I don't know, 30 days or 60 days, definitely not 120. But, but Yesenia and Michael, you're gonna have to-
Either 30 or 60 for the $3.
What's that?
I agree with doing the $3 for either 30 or 60 days.
I can work with it.
Annie, is that your motion? Yeah, let's make a motion, $3 for 30 days. And it's something, it's not a lot, but it is something. And, and I, I think, oh, she's going 60, but-
In consideration of this, I would like staff to also reach out and find out exactly what, what incentives and bonuses have already been paid. And also clarify the safety protocols and what Vons has done since the beginning. And I'm not sure exactly how I'm saying that, but I just know that I learned a lot from watching what Vons was doing in terms of, you know, finally putting up Plexiglas and, and, you know, not touching carts, things like that. So I know that Vons did a lot in the beginning, but I, I think we need to consider all of it if it's going to move forward. So I also want to ask that city staff, find out, any of these other cities that passed, are there any pending lawsuits?
Okay. All right. Annie, that's your motion? Yes.
And do I have a second?
That was for 30 days?
30 days.
30 days.
Yes.
Sorry.
$3 an hour.
Did you get that, Denise?
Yes. Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
And just for those people in the audience, it's bringing the ordinance to us to approve it. That's what we were voting on.
Right. And it'll come to us on the 24th?
Yes, Denise?
Since we were gonna have the first reading on the 24th, and then the next council meeting's on July 6th, is there a requirement for the 14 days in between?
It has to be adopted at a regular meeting, so you, you can't have a special meeting to adopt an ordinance.
But there's no timeframe in between the first and second reading?
Five days, so you're, so you're fine there. So the, the first that can be adopted is, it's gonna be July 6th.
Thank you.
So it's gonna be Tuesday the 6th is the first reading, then?
First reading.
So Tuesday the 6th at 5:00?
Right, right, right. First reading, next meeting, adoption, July 6th.
And then Tuesday the 20th?
Goes into effect 30 days after that.
Okay. All righty. Thank you.
Can I understand that better?
So it'll come on June 6th will be the first reading of the ordinance?
July 6th.
July 6th, and then two weeks later?
No, no. First reading would be, next meeting, the 24th.
At the special city council meeting.
Well, that's, yeah, okay. That's what I saw here.
And then adoption, July 6th.
I know, that's what, I thought you said it couldn't be...
On a special meeting.
At a special meeting, so that's where I got...
The adoption can't be at a special meeting.
Gotcha. Okay. So then the 24th is at 10:00 AM?
Is the first reading.
Is the first reading, along with the budget study session?
Yeah.
And then July 6th will be the second reading at 5:00?
Right.
Okay, perfect.
That is correct.
Okay, now we're gonna move to item number seven, which is update on outdoor dining, reopening with restriction, without restrictions.
I do have Ms. Devon Hart, and she's gonna do a PowerPoint presentation for you, the council, on all, where we're at. And we have a lot of decisions to make, be made tonight.
Okay, just wait, drive one second, we have a lot of people exiting the building.
Hey, Chris?
Okay, Devon.
Okay, I prepared a little presentation to walk through outdoor dining with everyone. Good evening, City Council. I'm Devon Hart, administrative analyst in the City Manager's Office. Awesome. You can go to the next slide. So just a quick overview. A quick overview, our temporary outdoor dining program was implemented on July 1st, 2020. It is in response to Los Angeles County Department of Public Health's restrictions on indoor dining, as a response to the COVID-19 pandemic. It provided an option for visitors and residents to eat, as well as a unique dining experience. There was no charge for businesses utilizing our public city beach parks, and, as well as areas of Crescent and Sumner Avenue. We had 13 businesses participate in the program.
Devon, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but is there a PowerPoint presentation happening?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, it's not reflected on our screens.
We're addressing that right now, Mayor Pro Tem.
I can walk through it, so, it's just a little recap. We have, of the 13 businesses participating in the program, we have businesses on South Beach, Middle Beach, areas of French Street or Crescent Avenue, as well as one business utilizing the public easement on Catalina Avenue. Not a part of our outdoor dining program, we also have one business utilizing an area on Sumner Avenue. On March 16th, 2021, the city council authorized a tiered approach to reducing our outdoor dining program to match the reopening of our government. So we slowly tiered outdoor dining down to 50%, and now, effective today, we tiered that outdoor dining down 50% to match the indoor capacity increase to 50%. And then, effective today, all capacity limits and social distancing requirements have been lifted. So city staff is requesting direction on how the city council would like to proceed with outdoor dining. Previously, at our last time we presented this item before city council, we thought that the ABC licensing might be the limiting factor in terms of permitting or not being able to permit outdoor dining. Effective on May 15th, 2020, the ABC amended regulatory relief to allow expansion of a licensed area footprint. So businesses that had alcoholic ABC licenses could operate outside of what was their previously permitted footprint, and therefore, areas like outdoor dining, our outdoor dining program became servable. The governor announced that regulatory relief, these regulatory relief measures will be extended through the end of December 31st, 2021.
Devon, for that, do you know if that's just for the seated areas, or is that to-go beverages as well?
That's to-go beverages as well. I have the full announcement, that includes eight different areas of regulatory relief. So delivery services are still being offered through December 31st, 2021. A new limiting factor that's, that city staff have been monitoring, and I'll kick it over to Assistant City Manager, Michael Palmer, to provide more, more information, is that depending on the scope, frequency, and permanence of our outdoor dining program, we may need to apply for a coastal development permit, as our program specifically utilizing the public beaches limits the amount the beaches are available to the public.
The only thing I'll just add to that is, we're still unpacking everything, as you can well imagine, the rescindication of a lot of the orders from the governor has created a lot of response from a lot of other agencies during COVID-19. The California Coastal Commission has done some temporary waivers to make some additional accommodations for businesses. We don't know yet how this is gonna impact, but typically, a coastal development permit is needed any time that there's a change in intensity of that use of land. So where once was a beach, now we're having dining, that would constitute a change of intensity of use. Another example would be going from like a residential to a commercial building, or a commercial to a restaurant, that's a change of the intensity of use. The other time that typically coastal development permits are needed is when there's a change in the access to the public beach and the coastal waters. Limiting where people can recreate on the beach would definitely have an impact, although it's not a guarantee. So we are working currently with the city attorney's office, we're monitoring what's coming out of the California Coastal Commission. They have not yet ruled how they're going to treat this, and Scott can also provide some additional information on that. But right now, we're just, we're just monitoring it, we just wanted to make sure that council was aware.
I just find that interesting, because we were calling that a sand park number one, and people still have access to the beach from everywhere, that there's a cut in the seawall, so I...
Well, on the park thing, yeah, I mean, depending on how you wanna say park, it's access into the water, that, that's the first part of that. And the other part of that is, the California Coastal Commission themselves had waived some of those requirements, because they understood the disproportionate impact that businesses had, because they weren't allowed to, to operate normally. And so some of the, the requirements that they had, they had waived, but that's not necessarily the case, now that the health officer orders have been rescinded at both the county and the state level.
All right, okay, thank you. Let's try, continue, Devon.
So moving forward, the application of the coastal development permit would be contingent on city council direction. City staff have developed a number of different options for council to consider, depending on how they would like to move forward with the outdoor dining program. The staff proposal would start with, it's our proposal to, effective immediately, eliminate all daytime outdoor dining, so outdoor dining between the hours of 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM, to allow the beaches and beach park areas to be utilized for, by recreational users and beachgoers. And just had, I had a busy weekend, and there were lots of people on the beach, and it's city staff's recommendation to, moving forward, eliminate all daytime use of the public right-of-way in our, in our beaches. If you would like to move forward with outdoor dining, there's a couple of different scenarios that we've prepared. One would be to have special outdoor dining events. This would allow outdoor dining to occur in standalone event or event, week-long celebrations. The events could occur in the shoulder season. We could do two weeks in April, May, September, October, times that the weather here is beautiful, but the beach demand is less. We could, in preparation for these events, promote the use of the beach in this way, in which case the residents and visitors would know well ahead of time that the beach areas would be impacted and less available. By making it a week-long event, we make it easier for restaurateurs and other businesses that are going to be utilizing the beach to bring down whatever supplies necessary for that, that extended period of time, as opposed to making it a one-off or just a weekend, where it's a lot of effort for maybe not as much return. And for that, we could establish a simple participation fee for a set number of tables per establishment. Another proposal is to continue our evening-only outdoor dining. Staff recommended that you eliminate outdoor dining during the day. If you'd like to continue outdoor dining nightly, we recommend that setup not begin until 5:30 PM, that you know, outdoor dining be permitted on July 4th or other special events weekends, maybe consider busy weekends through the months of July, and therefore, continue outdoor dining only during the week, Monday through Thursday. We proposed a, in this scenario, a flat fee for each business with a not maximum number of tables. There's a couple of different scenarios laid out, at $20 per table, and then you can see that if you have 10 tables, Monday through Thursday, every Monday through Thursday in the month of July, that would be a $3,200 fee. A $15 per table would come down to $2,400, and at $10 per table, it comes down to $1,600, just so city council can get an idea of what the, how the fee would affect each business. Any fee established is meant to be consistent and fair with our current leaseholders. Another option would to be, consider only off-season outdoor dining, so no outdoor dining between Memorial Day and Labor Day. We could create a flat fee for each business and a maximum number of tables. Again, similar to our, the week-long event concept, number one, there's less beach demand in the shoulder season. The only thing that would be affected during the shoulder season is some of our local events, where we would have to prohibit outdoor dining to occur during Fall Fest, our art festival, and art fair weekends, and Spring Fest, et cetera. And another, as mentioned previously, benefit of having outdoor dining events in the shoulder seasons is it may increase visitorship to the island. Our last proposal is to allow outdoor dining permits by special event permit only. So it would require a business that's interested in outdoor dining to apply by a special event permit. The council could then adopt by resolution the parameters that a, a special event permit would be granted, similar to how you established the parameters surrounding allowing additional cruise ships coming to the island. The city manager would then review the application and grant the facility use, similar to how we do our public parks or Tremont Hall. The fee parameter would also be included in a resolution. Again, no permits would be issued during our, during 4th of July, perhaps during our public concerts or other special events. The permits could establish a maximum number of permits that are available to each business. A business XYZ could be allowed a maximum of 20 permits in a year with no rollover. And then, again, we would have set dates established, and we could publicly notice when the beach would be used by a business. Other things to consider when establishing this process and procedure moving forward, city staff proposed to put together a process to document violations of the outdoor dining program. At this time, city staff has been very lax in the parameters that we've established for the various businesses. If a business puts out too many tables, if they set up too early or too late, we don't sight sign, write a letter to any businesses, we'll do friendly reminder emails, but we've been very lax in, in supporting, very lax in the enforcement, as a means to help support the business, and as knowing that we're all just trying to get through COVID the best that we can. Another thing to consider is that the Love Catalina Concert Series has requested use of the Beer Garden area, which is currently being utilized by an outdoor dining participant on Crescent Avenue. Their event's on Sundays, they have three scheduled so far, July 31st, September 4th, and October 9th. So that's something to consider. When we implement whatever direction city council would like to give us tonight, city staff just requests that the implementation is fair and across the board. So if we decide, if you direct us to eliminate outdoor dining, as we've requested during the day, we'd like it implemented in all areas of the public right-of-way, as well as the beaches. We've had complaints from other participants in the outdoor dining program, that they felt discriminated against, because their area was restricted, but another restaurateur was able to operate in another area of the public right-of-way. So we would just like, whatever direction, to be, please, consistent. And then, we, just a quick note regarding storage of extra supplies, heaters, extra tables and chairs. The fire chief did an inspection on some businesses earlier this week, and noted that the, as those restaurants are preparing for maximum occupancy capacity within their brick-and-mortar establishments, they have additional tables and chairs impeding access in case of a fire emergency, or they would have like an obstacle course to get through. I put together different fee proposals, depending on what your direction can, you would like to take. You are familiar with the per-table basis, where we establish a fee based on the number of tables each business would like to utilize. We have any, you can pick any amount you would like to charge a business per table. The square foot basis is, our current standard for all of our lessees is $3.25 per exterior square foot. We provided those three examples. The Pancake Cottage has a 56-square-foot patio, monthly rent of $182. The Naughty Fox has 350-square-foot patio, their monthly fee is $1,137.50. And the Avalon Grill has an 870-square-foot patio, their monthly fee is $2,824. All of, all of those businesses, the businesses that continually operated throughout the course, or didn't change ownership over the course of the pandemic, have been remitting their rent to the city throughout the entire shutdown process, and are, are in good standing with us today. Another fee proposal idea that came forward was to do a combination of a flat fee for a maximum number of tables in a specific footprint. So this option kind of integrates the maximum number, or the per-table basis, as well as the square footage basis. We use the same example as a Monday through Thursday in July, a maximum of five tables and space not to exceed 35, 350 square feet would be $1,000. If we use the square footage rate, that's the same rate that the Naughty Fox pays, it'd be one, just over $1,100. If we were to do a per-table rate, as proposed, that would be $1,600 fee, just to give everyone kind of a frame of reference. Something that's different for our current leaseholders is that they're able to occupy that space on the public right-of-way on a 24-hour basis, whereas our participants in the outdoor dining program are required to move their tables and chairs every evening. the outdoor dining program are required to move their tables and chairs every evening. So something we talked about is that we thought the per-table basis might be easier to calculate than the square footage charge. We discussed this at the last time we brought up outdoor dining. And that's, that's all I have for my presentation. If you guys have any questions, city council just needs to provide direction.
Go back to recommendation four, please. Okay, that's one I don't agree with. So if there's one, we can just get off. That would be nice.
Administratively, it'd be a major burden as well.
So can we get rid of number four?
Sold.
Okay, that's, okay, one thing. I just want to say, I'm disappointed, kind of a general concept, I'm disappointed that they have extended ABC till December 2021. We have so many drunks already in town, and I think Captain Bedali can, you know, profess to that. I mean, it's absolutely crazy, and I'm really bummed, and I don't know that the city can say, but we can't do alcohol, or we are preempted by, we can't make a tougher rule.
The city always can make a tougher rule, and included in the regulatory relief package, I can email that to city council after the meeting for your review. It says that jurisdictionally, we are allowed to, if you want to say no alcohol service was allowed within city parks or beaches, you can make that determination.
Just the "to-go" thing.
Well, for clarification, my understanding is we can regulate how businesses operate, but we can't regulate the sale of alcohol. The sale of alcohol is regulated by the Alcohol Beverage Control, but we can help to place conditions on businesses such as, you know, bars need to, their hours of operation need to close by 10 o'clock, or there's other stuff, and there's measures called crime prevention through environmental design or sub-ted strategies that we can also implore for that.
Okay, so answer my question simply again. Can we say there can no be, not be any alcohol beverages to go or to be, or to be consumed on our sand parts?
In terms of consumption, yes. In terms of the sale, no.
Okay, okay. All right.
Also, just as we're talking about alcohol and whatnot, I want to make sure that we, city staff takes a note, if, if the council decides to continue any form of outdoor dining with all of the things we still have to discuss, everybody has to get the proper licensing from the ABC. There's specific additions that I don't know that we have received from everybody. So I just wanted to make that point before I forgot it.
Absolutely. At this time, city staff do not require any of our participants in the outdoor dining program to find, to provide proof of licensing. Moving forward, that would definitely be something that city staff would require in the permitting process.
I just want to say, I like proposal two.
Let's, let's take, let's chop that one around and see what it looks like.
So in that proposal, we would continue with outdoor dining in the evenings. It'd be very similar to how we currently operate. We would just, in this specific proposal, no longer have outdoor dining during the day.
So let's, let's kind of dissect this one a little bit, because this is good. I don't know how we decide, number one, what the space will be, because right now it's way, it's too much. It has to come in. I don't know how it's decided how far out we should allow them to go. I don't know if that's with the fire department or with whom, but I do know there is, right now, there's pressure from people just kind of, employees just standing there like, hurry up and move. And they're not, they're not saying anything, but body language says a lot. So I don't know how we say, okay, XYZ store or business, you get this much.
I, I think it would start with determining the maximum number of tables you would like to see from each business operating out on the beaches. At this time, the most any single business is supposed to have on the beach, the maximum, is 10 tables. And we have some businesses operating 18, 17, and when you have one business take it to that limit, it encourages their neighbors to move.
To do the same thing.
To do the same thing. And city staff have not been enforcing what we've requested them, what we've requested. So this is where the violation process would, would come in handy. Our, our proposal is to, after we set a maximum number of tables per business, is to first give a business a warning if they put out too many tables, operate or begin operation too early, or maybe operate too late. And then, so we, our first would be a warning to the business, say you were only approved to have 10 tables out, you had 18 tables out, you had 11 tables out. And then the second time, we would just revoke their permit if city council could approve us to go in that direction.
Now, my thing is, is now that the governor has allowed restaurants to go completely full.
Yeah, unrestricted.
And we have a employee drought where we, where supposedly we can't find people to work, how are these establishments going to fill the inside of their restaurant and service the outside? So I don't think it needs to be what it was last summer, where everything was pretty much outside. I mean, we limit it to five tables to each establishment to be able to do something on the beach at night, because that is, that is a great thing to do, and by allowing them just to have the five tables, that push of getting that all set up and pushing people off the beach that are enjoying an afternoon on the beach, that would negate that part of it, I think, by limiting how many tables they actually have.
Yeah, I think, I think we have to keep it somewhat simple like that.
Right. And, and when I, and when I say five table, five tables, I'm, to me, I visualize five tables, five foretops. And you can configure that for any type of seating that you need to do. So if you have a party of six, you put two tables together and you've got a party of six, that it never goes more than those five tables, those four, five tables of four.
And the other consideration.
Do we have a method of, if they add extra tables?
What's that?
Do we have a method of monitoring the restaurants to see if they do add more tables?
Well, it's going to take code enforcement and law enforcement, because, I mean, it would be simple if it was just the four or five tables, 20 people, whatever. That does make it simpler for everybody. The other thing is if they have, if they're doing a full restaurant, and now they've got all these tables and chairs, and, and their full restaurant is all set up, and now they bring in all those tables and chairs at the end of the day, where do those go?
Right.
Because as the pictures that I saw from the, for the fire chief, that whole thing is, it's not good right now. And so that question would be, where would, where would that be? And the other thing is what, we're going to get rid of the heaters immediately as well, right? Heaters are gone?
For this season.
For this season at least, yeah.
Okay.
Not for, yeah.
Yeah. And six, five, no, this, yeah. Okay. Yesenia or Cindy, comment? Before, before the audience comes up?
Oh, I just, I am not sure I totally understand the per-table. I get that it's easier to administer that, but I kind of want to keep it the same as the square footage for what we do with all of our other leases, just to make it fair. So that was just one comment. I got the liquor license comment. I like the idea of reducing the number of tables for sure, and I would like, if the council decides to extend this, I would like the outdoor dining to sunset at the end of summer, and we be done with that altogether. But that's only if, I mean, it sounds like everybody's in favor of continuing it, so, yeah, I'd like to hear from.
So Cindy, let me go back to a comment that you made, because I definitely agree that it needs to be fair with the current city leaseholders. So I would think the way we would do that is set up those 20, those four tables with the four things around it, and, you know, and see what that square footage is, times that $3.25 or something like that. Just a thought.
This is Scott. The, the one issue there is, I'm starting my video, is that people that have leases with the city, they're leasing it 24 hours a day because that's their property. This would only be a portion of that and not on weekends. So we'd also, to be fair, have to have some adjustment for the actual hours that people are working, which is why staff came up with the per-table charge rather than the lease charge.
Well, as long as that is somewhat comfortable, because, I mean, for, okay, and let me ask another question. Why did we exclude the weekend?
It's just a proposal. If city, if city, if city council would like to direct us to have seven days a week.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's just what, it's in there, but I, I don't know if I would be approving just Monday through Thursday.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I mean, I would prefer to go, if you're going to do it all, because, yeah. Because I don't think our people are coming to Catalina to say, oh, we got outdoor dining, so let's get on the boat and come over, you know, so everybody should have their, be able to have access to it. So I would say seven days a week.
I would be in favor of a square footage option. I think the biggest concern that I've heard, and I know that there are some in the audience tonight that have a space they utilize on a regular basis and wanting to be there after a certain hour of the day when outdoor dining is still occurring. One of the discussions I had with someone who's a regular beachgoer was that they were perfectly okay with having the beach shared between outdoor dining and regular beachgoers even after the hours where dinner starts, but just that there's a delineation. So when they set up in the morning, they know that they're not going to have to move because the table's going to be put there, or they're not going to have someone breathing down their neck to get them to move. So the access to the beach doesn't get removed. I'm wondering if the lack of coastal development permit could be avoided with having a certain percentage of the beach still accessible and still usable by the general public. I just, I agree with the concerns regarding table storage and looking at what that looks like. That would absolutely need to be a part of any approval moving forward, that there would need to be a dedicated storage location that would not impede or cause additional safety hazard within the restaurant after hours or during the time that that's not being utilized. I, my concern in alcohol is only in the to-go cups that are not being utilized at the seating outside or in the restaurant. People are taking them to go and then going and sitting in parks or sitting, walking down the street, drinking them, even though it's supposed to be a lidded, like fully closed, bottled something as opposed to a cup and a straw that you can sip and cup down.
But the other thing of that is that it's supposed to be going with food. It's just not buying the alcohol and walking away with it.
Right. That part makes me laugh a little bit, honestly. Like, if you're gonna, so you have to buy an appetizer to be able to get a cup of whatever. It's a little silly. I'm not going to lie, it's ridiculous. The part that makes sense to me is still being able to offer alcohol service on the beach with dinner. I think that makes sense. I'm in agreement regarding daytime use for the summer. I know, and I think, personally, I think this is a program that should be extended. I think it's a program that brings a lot to the visitors, brings a lot to the people that live here. It's kind of nice to sit out on the beach and be served lunch or dinner, but having it during the day, especially during the summer, is challenging. I think if we were to move forward with it and keeping it, it would need to be addressed in terms of what that looks like in the shoulder seasons and offseason. I know there are frustrations among some of the restaurant owners regarding not being able to use it during certain times that we anticipate will be busy, but sometimes it's foggy, so it's not as busy at the beach. We can't control the weather. We have to go by what we think will happen. So that, I understand the frustration. I'm sorry for the frustration, but it's something that we just have to be able to put in place.
And then my other thing is programs that the city actually does, such as Beach Bingo.
Right. Beach Bingo, movies on the beach.
Movies on the beach, that means you're not going to be able to use the beach.
There's still, well, and there still are places where people, there's enough space on South Beach for luos to have a space, for endemic to have a space, and still be able to host the movie on the beach. That's not an issue. You can still host Beach Bingo in between those two restaurants' locations. It's communicating with those businesses and making sure they know that that evening, this is their setup space. It may be a little adjusted to the left for luos, it's not going to be straight out in front of them. They still have access to it, they can utilize it, and people can still access the beach and have a safe and great time. I think there's a way to make it work for everyone.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think that they just, that city and the business owners need to look and say, okay, from the seawall or from the, whatever, you can go out, you've got a, you know, chair here, chair here, and a table there, so you're going out about eight feet.
Okay, let's, let's bring this back in. We're talking limiting the table, so they shouldn't have to measure out from the seawall.
I don't know that I agree with that number. My family can't sit at a foretop. Our family takes up 13 seats if we go anywhere.
Then you, you would take the whole.
You make a reservation.
You make the reservation, and you take the whole area.
That, they haven't been taking reservations, are they going to?
The thing, that's their.
Business.
Their business. They're going to have to decide how they, the thing is, we're offering them a privilege.
Sure. I just think the privilege should be a little bit more.
And they're going to have to learn how to work within our parameters that we're setting for them. They don't get to dictate what those parameters are, because we're, we're giving them public property to do their business.
I do also think it's a public service, though. It's saving people time in dining and allowing them to service more people at the same time. It's a good thing.
And I don't, I, I worked food service. I, I mean, I slept plates up and down at Solomon's Landing up those.
Forever, yes.
Levels.
Remember, yeah.
And people are going to come and they're going to wait, because that's just, yes, it's, it's a, it's a great experience to be able to sit on the beach and do it, but that's not what people feel, come into Avalon, come into Catalina Island, because they're going to be able to eat on the beach. That is not their priority. It's a great experience when it, when it happens.
I would, I, I think we're mostly in agreement. I would just say that I think the amount of social media clout that the island gained with beachside dining being something amazing coming out of the pandemic has been phenomenally huge.
And I'm not going to, I'm not going to disagree with that either.
Yeah, everywhere. Yeah, but we're way better than Jojo's parking lot.
But once again, it's, it's public property that we're allowing them to do their business on.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Cindy or Yesenia, any comments?
I'm in agreeance with Michael. I'd like to do a certain amount of tables, and then the restaurant can organize how they need to, if that is reservations, and they must do that. And then also the point that you guys made about like Beach Bingo and movie nights, that was a great point that I didn't even think of, because then restaurants are going to have to keep up with those events to make sure to let their customers know, because I know that's going to be a complaint.
Now we have our fire chief up here.
Just a quick question. When all this started, was this, was this just a temporary?
Yep.
Item?
Yes. No.
We've gone over outdoor dining on Crescent for, this is probably the fourth time I've read the folder the last two days. I have a huge problem with it as a target hazard for us, the storage, the improper storage of tables with full capacity. It's, it's dangerous for us. Front Street's a limited access place, and if we have to go in and we're dragging the hose and there's all these extra tables and chairs in there, it's a more hazard for my guys and with our limited staff. I know you could say all day long that, I could say all day long, my guys are going to be perfect on every call, but stuff happens. They're going, you're going to forget, you're going to be tired one night. The stuff's not going to go where it's planned to go.
Mike, so either they show us that they have proper storage, or it's really just like impossible for them to be able to have the outdoor dining?
And to, and to be honest, Mike, I'm with Cindy on outdoor dining goes away at the end of summer. I, I don't think it needs to be a permanent thing.
Because, yeah, with the, with the amount of people coming to town, I've had my gear stolen off the rig with all these people downtown. This was 10 years ago. Couple weeks ago, guy, people were trying to break into the ambulance and the lifeguard truck and drive it away. I mean, it's, it's crazy down there. But for me, it's the storage, and we can go from there. But that's number one of public safety for me and getting rid of the temporary and letting it go away once everybody's back inside.
Okay, do we have somebody wants to comment in the audience around the Zoom call? I don't know who that is.
I've never been to one of these.
Oh, hi, Jerry.
My name is Jerry Bravo, and I manage El Galleon Restaurant and Toyon Grill. And most of the proposals that I just watched you guys, none of them. And most of the proposals that I just watched you guys, none of them, to me, make sense, to be honest with you guys. When you start dinner at 5:30 or start setting up at 5:30, your kitchen backs up. We tried it for, what was that holiday, Memorial Day weekend? My kitchen was an hour and 10 minutes for the latest ticket. I think most of the things that are proposed there are not based on business people, to be honest with you. It's most like, oh, we're gonna go with Lisa's schedule, we're gonna go with so-and-so's schedule, we're gonna go with so-and-so's schedule. It doesn't work for a business. I've been a manager since I was 21 years old, and I've never experienced this many people in Catalina. Now, if you guys are gonna put a stop to the amount of people that come to visit Catalina, then, you know what, four tables is fine, but you guys don't put a stop to it. So there's three times more visitors coming to Catalina, nowhere to eat. We have a two-hour wait list. Why? Because we don't have enough seating. But none of you see that, none of you. And that's upsetting. And a lot of the decisions being made, and this is why I don't show up here, is because they're personal decisions that you guys make on yourselves.
But, okay, are you open at full capacity today?
No, I'm actually closed, because I don't have enough, I don't have enough staff.
Okay, so.
Okay, and then we fill up your beach with dining tables. Do you still have staff?
To me, to be honest, not to be rude, that's my problem to figure out. I'm the manager, I'll figure it out. I figured it out for a whole entire summer last summer, and I had whatever amount of tables, plus my inside. So if, like Lisa has a family of 13, or she wants to sit at, we don't take reservations. And the number one reason, and they can all agree to me, we don't take reservations because we can't guarantee people times, because there's so many people trying to get into the restaurants, eat, have an experience. And this point, I don't think, none of you have commented on the fact that, oh, we spoke to the customers. We spoke to locals. All the drunk people that you guys are talking about, all those drunk people, they're here to have a good time. Every summer, we have all the drunk people.
You can talk to law enforcement. It is tougher this summer than it has been. It is tougher.
Welcome, it's a fun town.
But that's okay, they're coming to have fun, and if they get out of hand, we've got law enforcement to handle them. Yeah.
That's what they're here for, we're known for that. We're known for having a good time at a bar at Luau Larry's, going to Marlin Club, having karaoke at El Gallin. I mean, that's what it's all about. And a lot of the decisions being made, honestly, are really upsetting.
So I just want, and I don't mean to be rude either, but I've lived here for 25 years, and I'm sorry, people have been fed on this island. There have been wait times forever on this island. I worked in a restaurant that did, now I can't think of the word. They did seating that was, where you had a twenty-top that went like this. So, and then all of a sudden, COVID comes and we can't do anything. We have to have the beach, we have to use the beach, because we can't take care of them inside. We let you use the beach. COVID is going away. They have allowed people to move back inside. Then we, you know, we could always just say, no, we're not gonna do this at all, and move everybody back inside. It's the attitude of, gimme, 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 gimme. Don't tell us, but you're using public property to do this. And we have to look out for the good of the entire group coming, and that's my frustration on this. We have allowed you guys to run your businesses on the beach.
Like you said, you did it 25 years ago, or for 25 years. Times change. Let me tell you, there's so many people that come to Catalina, and I have to deal with them. Great, it's my job, I love it, and that's what I chose, all right? That's my response to you. But just to be clear, I'm just here to support these guys, because we all go through it. Yes, the beach is great, the beach gives you an experience. I'm asking, basically, yeah, give me six tables, because that's a decent amount of tables that a server can take. Done, that's all of it.
Oh, so now you're just saying go from five to six, or four to six? I mean, and that, you know, and yes, you know, Jerry, and yes, you do run your business, but I think one of the points that you made and Michael made, if you can't fill, if you don't have the staff for your people now, and you've got now a full restaurant inside, and then you've got the outside, it's not gonna be any easier for you, and the wait will be longer.
That's not what I was saying. What I was saying basically was saying, I don't have enough staff to be open seven days a week. So one of the proposals there was like, what, Thursday, not the weekend? It didn't make sense.
All right, so what days, see, and I said, and we opened it up, as you said, seven days a week. There's no reason we should say Monday through Thursday. We're saying seven days a week. You decide when you want to close your restaurant.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Do we decide on a proposal and then make sure that each restaurant can show us they have proper storage?
The storage is really, really important, yes, yes. Because I'm assuming the restaurants are gonna wanna, and Mike, Mr. Bray's here. Is that Maggie? I'm sorry, my, oh, hi, Margaret, okay.
Mayor Marshall?
Yes.
I just want to clarify that in the PowerPoint presentation, it was purely the Monday through Thursday was just to break down a number. It was not that that's the days we were giving you to open the beach or any outdoor dining spot.
Yes, I think Devin kind of clarified that as well. Thank you. But Margaret, did you want to make a comment? Or I don't know whether the restaurants are sitting up there, I know Dave's there and...
I also have two comments on line two.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Margaret Bray from Maggie's Blue Rose. Listening to all this, I came with a different, a whole bunch of different things I was gonna talk about, but I'm scratching my head here. You guys are constantly talking about making this wonderful for the visitors, making this an experience for them. That's what we've done. We've given this to the visitors, they love it. They come here, they do day trips just to come and have dining, and they go back on the late boats. And, I mean, you guys are making it sound like we're just a bunch of money-hungry people that are filling our pockets with bowls of gold, and we've been closed for a long time. We all have loans out. We all are drowning. We're all trying to come above water right now. Just because we're open full capacity right now does not mean we're back to normal. We all have a bunch behind us, not only us, but our workers as well. These people haven't paid their rent, these people haven't been making any money. A lot of them haven't collected unemployment. And, I mean, this is, I don't understand. This is something that's enhancing the island. People don't sit on the beach at seven or eight o'clock in the evening. Why are we not allowed to put tables on the beach? You walk down there, look at what people are enjoying and what they're liking. This thing you guys are talking about, I'm gonna go all over the board, but about drunk people. There has been drunk people here. I've been coming to the island for 22 years. There's drunk people every summer. They go to Luau Larry's, they go to El Gallin, they go to all these teachy clubs. They go have fun, they go to restaurants, they drink, they eat. This is a party town. People come here in the summer, and that's all you see. I don't, putting this on the restaurants, I don't understand how this is now our fault that people are coming here and getting drunk. This has been happening since the beginning of, from when I've been here. And like I said, I've been 20-some years here. But what we're asking for is to just, when people aren't on the beach, we're not pushing people off. I'm speaking for myself. We ask people, or sometimes there's some locals that sit in our area, and when we start setting up, they say, oh, we'll be moving. We always tell them, you guys don't have to go because of us, we're not pushing you out. We don't push people out. And I don't understand why we can't, you know, it's always about the visitor, and we try to do as much as we can for them. It's about the residents, but let's make it a little bit about us. Because it's not just about me as the owner, or him as the owner, or him as the owner. It's about all the families that work for us. I have 35 people that work for me. I have 35 people I'm responsible for, that I feel responsible for. This business was given to me. I didn't inherit anything. I worked my butt off to build this business, like all these guys have. None of us got it for free, nobody gave it to us. This is something we did, and our workers work just as hard for us. We're trying to make a living, we're trying to get our heads above water. We've been underwater for quite a while now with this COVID. It's hit all of us.
Yeah.
We're all struggling.
You're limited for two minutes, and your point's well-made, Margaret.
My point is that I just want to make sure that, you know, the people love it, and it's helping us to catch up. It's helping our employees, it's, these employees all live in this town. And we're just asking that you, you know, and I wanted to talk a little bit about the daytime on the back of the beach and the serpentine wall.
Well, take a seat, let somebody else talk for a minute. You're supposed to just be limited to two minutes, so that's why I cut you off. Go ahead, David.
Mayor Marshall, Mayor Protam, and council members and city staff. My name is Dave Hurley. I own the Catalina Cantina Restaurant. First thing I want to do is thank you for allowing this outdoor dining. I would not be here today if it wasn't for that opportunity to do outdoor dining. I came here tonight, I'm more confused now than when I got here tonight, because the terms beach dining and outdoor dining are being interchanged, and I'm
Go ahead.
Kind of confused how that pertains to me. I've been using the beer garden outside, and the PowerPoint presentation spoke both about no beach dining during the day, and then it also said something about no outdoor dining during the day.
That would be on Crescent, like when you, where you are, Dave, and where, and the blue water, when they were using that area, that would not be available during the daytime, and it would not be, depending on consensus, not be available on the Fourth of July and special events.
Okay, well, some of us restaurants are lunch places. A lot of the restaurants in town are dinner houses. Some of us, like Margaret and I, were lunch places. The area I've been using has a precedent for being used during the daytime, and it was used for every single major event on major weekends, for every fundraiser, run, marathon, all the bands, the skateboarding. I used it last year, it's outside of the public walkway. It's totally unutilized space, and I'd like the opportunity to continue to use it during lunchtime. I'd also like for you guys to consider letting Maggie, Maggie's Blue Rose, have some kind of outdoor present during the daytime, because she's a lunch place also. All the restaurants in this town have been seriously hurt through the pandemic, but the lunch places have been hurt even more because of the lack of cruise ship. We haven't had the cruise ship.
A minute, Danny. Okay, I've gotta limit you. I understand exactly what you're saying. Does anybody have a question of David? Dave, before I set him down. Okay, we hear you loud and clear about your desire to keep it open at lunch. I don't know how it's gonna go, but I definitely hear you. And I know it has been beneficial for you. Do you have some on our Zoom?
I do, I have three comments.
Can I yield my two minutes to my wife?
Yeah, but we're gonna hear these first.
Yeah, but we've got some right here, yeah.
The first comment I have is from Carl Johnson. He says, "I think that if restaurants are able to operate at full capacity, then they should not be able to dine on the beach. Aside from food, safety, and temperature control, I think it looks tacky when people are taking a stroll down Front Street and they're running into runners that are taking food to the tables. With the fast-paced work that is the restaurant industry, I see collisions occurring regularly on city property, and that makes me question if liability is worth the risk, or if these restaurants have been added, have added insurance coverages since they started or indemnified the city. With that said, I also think that if the restaurants are paying full rent and they can't operate at full capacity, then there should be outdoor dining to help substitute the potential lost revenue. Should only substitute for the same capacity they're missing, no more, no less. That would mean if they operate at 75% capacity, then still allow their setup to, set up their other 25% capacity on the beach. If you feel that is a great opportunity to continue outdoor dining, I suggest that you charge the restaurant's rent in addition to their brick-and-mortar rent when they utilize outdoor city property that exceeds their regular brick-and-mortar restaurant's capacity. Sounds like a great way to generate revenue, too." The next comment that I have is from Sally George. She writes, "I oppose the continued use of the City of Avalon beaches for dining. It has served its purpose when COVID restrictions were placed on restaurants. Now that these restrictions have been lifted and restaurants can operate at full capacity, the beaches should be used for recreational activities. With hotter weather upon us, the beaches are desirable until 7:00 PM or later. Residents wanting to enjoy the beach after work with their children, and visitors should not be limited to a section of the beach. Fact that the city has to use the fees collected for cleanup and bird abatement is crazy. Keep the beaches as recreational activities." Sally George, number seven, Lower Terrace. And then the last comment that I have comes from Paula Patterson. She writes, "I support option three. The problem of enforcement and safety would be alleviated. What are the current hours of code enforcement? Do we have the capacity to enforce whatever's decided?"
I remember what three was. Okay, thank you for your comments, everyone. Okay. Oh, Steve?
I'd like to yield Steve Steakhouse two minutes to my wife and child.
Oh, that's what you said, yes. Okay, Margaret?
Can I also ask that, Michael, can you forward those comments to us in email? Because you, for, at least for me, you cut out after Carl's comment, and I thought for Sarah, too.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and Margaret, as long as you're gonna say something different than what you've already said.
I just want to talk about the charge that you guys would like to charge us, and you wanted to charge us the same as the Avalon Grill or the Naughty Fox. The whole thing is that we're not a brick-and-mortar like they are. They get to have their seating, breakfast, lunch, and dinner. We are limited in time, so I think that we should be charged a completely different fee. We shouldn't be the same as them. It doesn't even, I mean, make sense. And then also, as far as for lunch, I've asked a few of you to come down and see setups that we've done. Where the beach is plenty open, we're in the very back where no one ever sits, and there's a few of us, Endemics at the very end there where nobody sits, myself, Dave in his little corner. I mean, I don't see why, if there's no one using that part, that we can't use it to keep going and to make revenue and keep our workers working. And I have no problem bringing my people back, so I have plenty of people to employ. I just need, you know, some place for them, and that'd be great to have lunchtime for people. And like I said, it would be in the very back by the serpentine wall. We don't want to be anywhere forward on the sand, and places like where Dave's at or where Endemics at, and other little places where people can set up some tables, not a whole bunch, but just to have their presence outdoors. And I just was asking for that as well.
Okay. Well, and just like we can't tell Jerry, Jerry doesn't want us to tell us how to do his business, you choose to work just a lunch business, right? So that's your choice as well. And I think that's Jenny Hoff walking up. Let me put my glasses on.
Good evening. I really liked what Mike had to say, because I think safety is the first concern about this, and this has been an issue throughout the years, and especially on the serpentine wall. Or is that, that's incredible to me that you're going to, in the daytime, impact that. Maybe some of you guys are not going downtown in the Fourth of July weekend or many weekends, but there's quite a bit of impact of people crowding, and I could see that ambulances, fire, et cetera, would have difficulties. And I also think that the idea of people coming over to eat on the beach has already been answered by Descanso. I never thought I'd be saying that, but it's not like you couldn't. What I'm afraid of is it turns into an isthmus situation, where you can't get on the beach without buying a $12 beer. And that's, I think, not fair to people who can't afford to eat on the beach and, you know, enjoy that so-called, you know, the cocktail hour. And the other thing would be that, oh, I like the third proposal, actually, of the shoulder seasons, because that seems just more reasonable than summer overcrowding. And I do think our Front Street is getting overcrowded, and there is trouble walking down, having been there 76, well, the business, 76 years. There's a lot of traffic going through with umbrellas and people with chairs and things that, you know, you're not...
Two minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, I want the same as the Bray's to get, so. I just feel like the, it could get excessive, it could get out of control, and I appreciate you guys putting a sort of a sunset on it to look at it again, because... Because there could be some real difficulties. Everybody was very kind in COVID.
Right.
And they could understand the restaurants wanting to set up, et cetera. But I don't know if they would be so kind now and you know, like they're sitting there and it's a 90 degree day and they're it's at 5:30 and I like the better the starting at six. So, you know, that's just my two cents. Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay.
I did want to ask Fire Chief Mikey if if they did put tables by that serpentine wall. Is that a hazard to you guys?
On the other side of the serpentine wall, on the sand park.
Yes.
Beachside.
On the on the beach side of the wall?
Yes.
It.
Yeah, where Maggie's suggesting.
Anywhere on the any extra tables are a hazard for us. With the restaurants being full, any extra tables, the storage and everything is a hazard for us.
The storage, but but if in the let's just talk about the because I don't think we have any consensus at all about allowing them to be on the beach on during the day. That seems like we're not wanting that. So but the nighttime with a limited number of tables on the beach side, Sand Park side, is that a problem for y'all? I know the storage you're going to be concerned about.
I think the closer, especially the closer the Front Street you get, the worse it'll be. I'm against any extra tables out there.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, I'm not.
Yeah, okay, that's what you're saying. While they're on the beach, it's even a problem is what you're saying. Yes, okay. Okay. Are there any other comments from Michael?
I have no comments.
Okay, and and I believe that all of these businesses do provide list the City of Avalon as additionally insured. Is that correct, Devin? Yes, okay.
Well, I just want to share kind of a story that that, you know, as I've been through my career. One of the places I was at is Chico. And Chico, we reimagined our downtown. And what had happened was a lot of the businesses were behind a piece of glass and our streets weren't activated. And we reimagined that with a complete street project and really changed the downtown and made something different. And if you look at what's happened like in Long Beach, they're doing the same thing. There's a whole different experience. And that's if you want to keep people coming back here, you've got to create those different experiences. And the way that we've applied some principles when we walked through that took us about two years with the Downtown Business Association. But was that the highest and best use of the real estate is dynamic. And it changes at time of day, season of the year. And it could change from, you know, daytime to nighttime. And so reimagine those spaces to be at the highest and best use of the time. If that beach is empty at night and not fully utilized, you can use it for something else. And so same same way if their restaurants are empty during the day to be out on the beach. Maybe we should keep a few more in the restaurants and use that space on the beach more. Okay? Because it's more important to have the beach. When you're in the mainland, you're coming on 405 freeway, you're going into a parking lot, you're pressurized to go onto the beach. Here we were in, you know, a very idyllic situation, very relaxed when you get on the beach and you want to be relaxed and not pushed off. That being said, though, on this weekend, I did go out there and view several times what was happening there. Maggie's did adjust their frontage right next to the wall and it appeared to work. And it could appear to work in a couple of different sections, but we can't throw a lot of people out there. It would be very limited if we actually did that. At nighttime, the main constraint is that you do need people away from the seawall so that we don't have anybody fall. They have to be falling on this. If they did fall on the sand, it'd be on the same surface. So that's a minimum eight feet, if not more. And then you have to have access to the end to be able to get to the water at any time. So you know, what I'm saying is that it I really believe that to push, we've got to push the envelope here. If we're going to keep on keeping changes and keep Catalina fresh and keep people coming here. We've got to take that opportunity to to be able to do some of these things just like this. So, you know, it's and it doesn't have to be, you know, a long term decision for this. It is something we found out when we worked at the City of Chico was that we had to really work it and manage it to perfect it. And that's what you need to do is just like the storage, where does that work? Just get that piece figured out. Because we had delivery trucks that we were taking parking away, but we still had to figure out where they went, where the bikes go, where the pets go. And that's what you do in a complete street. You figure out what all that works and put it in a system and perfect that system. And then you you stand back and be amazed at how good that operates.
But it but is it, okay, in in regards to that, and I appreciate and I understand what you're saying. But is it better to move kind of slow instead of opening up the flood dates? I mean, we've, you know, I think I think we're all talking about what you're talking about. We're trying to do it, but not go crazy. Because I don't want my phone ringing all the time for people that say about there's no place on the beach or whatever. And I appreciate Lisa's comments because all of a sudden it's a cloudy day. Well, I'm sorry. The rule is, you know, don't try to say, okay, it's a little foggy today, so we're going to move the tables and chairs out. Because I'm willing to give some tables and chairs in in opposition, kind of, to what our Fire Chief is saying, because I'm hoping and know that, well, hoping, that the restaurants that are able to participate in this program will take care of that or know that that privilege is gone immediately.
Exactly.
You know, and I I know they've got a hell of a lot of tables right now, some of these businesses, a lot of extra ones. They're not going to get to use all of those. I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know where you're going to put them all. But that is going to be a problem and you're not going to be able to stuff them back somewhere in your in your business. So I think we're being more than fair. We were excellent over this whole pandemic. Michael, you know, the Sand Park was brilliant. And everybody has been good. And I really appreciate Dave Hurley, he at least thanking us for what we allowed them to do in all of these last months because I'm not hearing appreciation from basically any of these other businesses. And it's rather frustrating. So.
Well, this weekend I I did hear that. I talked to most of them because I was just down there if nothing else, just monitoring what was happening, you know, because I knew that we were going to be talking about this. And I think that the businesses are very appreciative of it. And really, it's just pick something and then prove the concept. And if the concept doesn't work, change it. And if it finally, if it just flops, then get rid of it. But you're going to miss that opportunity if we don't right now because we're on a momentum. And I think there's people in the mainland are coming over here just for this because it's one of the special experiences that you can get just here in Avalon.
Appreciate your comment. So I think.
Can I just add one comment?
Sure.
Every one of those tables are folding tables. The folding tables at Steve's Steakhouse take up this much room.
Front of the mic.
Sorry, Steve Bray, Steve's Steakhouse. Every one of those tables on Maggie's Blue Rose are folding tables.
I know, sweetheart, but.
It takes up this much room.
Okay, but well, I we have pictures to the contrary that for the that the Fire Chief is saying is not giving them decent access. So do you want to show those pictures?
Yeah.
Okay. So I appreciate what you're saying, Stephen, but we get, you know, when they take pictures to the contrary, it makes us a little concerned.
I'll also just piggyback on Bob's comments. The there were a couple of presentations, one being the Sea Level Rise presentation, which had some interesting additions to the seawall. Things like that make sense to me in terms of being able to utilize that both as a public right of way and or a restaurant service. I would encourage everyone, if they can, as things start to reopen and you feel safe to do so, to visit the Parklets in Long Beach and look at some of the spaces. I will absolutely admit that we don't have the level of space currently that Long Beach has.
Right.
That's our issue. That's our safety issue. It makes sense. It's it's the cause of concern. I think that there is a way to keep the charm of Front Street and still be able to implement Parklets like that that would allow for city rentable space to restaurants and entities, public and private. And some things in the changing of the access to the Green Pier and the safety aspects that are being implemented there and things like the rampways that were being looked at that will create an additional build that may be able to yield additional storage. And that storage space may also be usable by the restaurants and or rentable for the restaurants.
Right, yeah.
Those types of solutions, looking at spaces that are being poorly used right now, that could resolve or mitigate 99% of the concerns that we have.
Sure.
Are things we should be looking at. I'm a little sad to hear about the idea of any. I understand why people want to. I'm not, I'm not, I I agree the safety issue is there. I think that, and I've been a proponent of this since before COVID, so you guys have all heard me say this before. It's in addition to the businesses. It's in addition to the bottom line of the city in terms of additional tables and seating and taxes and things like that.
Sure.
It's in addition to the visitor. It's in addition to the resident who doesn't get to do this very often. I think we're one of the few families that I've witnessed that actually go out and do picnics on the beach sometimes. We're normally up in the front half of the beach and it wouldn't be in the right of way of these this particular space. So
Right, no.
I think there's a common ground we can find.
Of course, I think we're almost there.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Michael.
Okay, so last night I debated getting up about 11 and going down and taking pictures of all the establishments, but it didn't happen. So I went this afternoon unannounced just to just to take a look at what I would find about storage. This is by no means some places were closed, some were open. This is just a couple of photos. So extra chairs, tables. With all of us in our gear, it'd be very hard to get through pulling the hose line in. Those things on the table, those could fall, trap us trying to get out. Same with the one on the right. Extra tables and chairs. And then same with the one on the right, the aisle way by the bar is blocked.
It's on Zoom.
There's nothing on the screen.
Excuse me, I'm going to get a little bit of water.
Are you able to see anything on the screen now?
The only thing that I see is the file folder. And it looks like it's going to click on outdoor dining.
Mike, I got it.
Is it a dip? Yep, there it is.
Sorry about that.
Can we move to the next one, Cindy?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I I just really wanted that visual. Thank you.
No problem. So there's a couple couple more. Couple more of libiting our egress out, out and in. And then I also stopped by Lou Alary's and Lobster Trap and they told me there are no, I asked to see where they store their tables. And they said they no longer were doing any outdoor dining. That's it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Lou Alary's and who were not doing it? Sorry.
Lobster Trap.
Thank you.
Adam?
Hi, guys. This is my first time too. I want to say just thank you for the opportunity. We opened up, will be two years, July. And we opened up and thankful to you guys. I was able to survive, actually. So thank you. I didn't come up here to argue or do anything. I'm happy to work with you guys. My beach is empty down there. I'm 150 yards away from a beach entrance. So my beach is pretty empty. But I wanted to keep it short and thank you guys for everything.
How many tables did you have out there? I know it's in this summary thing.
We're right now, we're only Friday, Saturday and Sunday and we're, I have probably five.
Okay.
So we're pretty small.
You're only open on Friday, Saturday and Sunday?
No, we're open up every day, but we only do the we only did the beach dining these last few months for the weekend.
Oh.
Because we don't have a lot of foot traffic down there, so.
Okay, great.
But yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it looks like there's some consensus on seven days a week. Seems like there's a consensus on no daytime. Set up at 5:30.
Could we get formal motions on those, please, and have a vote count?
Okay, I just wanted to, okay. Well, so I'll make the motion again.
Somebody make a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that they set up at 5:30. Dinner at 6:00, no daytime. The number of tables, I'm not sure how we want to quite get to that.
I'm good at five or six.
Okay, five or six tables. But is that, can I have six, eight tops or can I have?
Six, six, six tables of four.
So 24 people.
Yeah.
Well.
That's not enough even. It's not worth it even do that.
Well, you don't have to do it. That's exactly right.
I understand.
You know, so and I mean, if everybody's got a lot of staff, I am hearing that people don't have staff. So if you have as much going on outside as inside.
Yeah, where you're at, like probably easy 14 people going out. They're going to be on unemployment now.
Well, there's other people that are going to use them probably. I'm not being facetious. I don't know. I don't know what you're what you would like, Steve. You'd probably like to just give you the whole beach for lunch and dinner.
No, it's like I'm not asking, I'm just asking for a little bit more than 24 people.
Well, I.
Steve, how many, how many people do you see, do you sit inside? What do you, what does the Fire Department allow you to have?
Can we, can we like go in the, can we go like up to 50 people?
Okay, I'm I'm not going to recommend 50. Okay, have a seat. I'm not going to recommend 50. I'm going to go with the 24. We can always look at it again. And we can check out the beaches and whatever, but I think we're coming into the season pretty heavy. There are a lot of people. And I know maybe the chamber is doing such a damn good job bringing people here. So what is our occupancy? Is it based on restaurants? Is it based on hotels? Maybe we shouldn't advertise so well. You know, we're only so big. The island is not going to grow. So I'm sorry if I'm sounding a little bit frustrated. But but things can overflow and and they are. And and that's just because of COVID. Next summer might not be like this. You know, we don't know. But if we keep reinventing, I guess, like Bob says, we probably can have this all the time. But so I'm going to go at 24 tables.
No, 24 people.
Or 24 people. Thank you very much. Have to have some kind of a plan with the Fire Department to let them know where those are going to be. Heaters are gone. Now, in terms of how much they pay, what seems to be the best way to do that?
I'm good with the 10 to 15.
The issue is, do we want to take some?
$10 to $15 a table? So it'd be $40 a night? So how many, okay.
I think it should be the square footage. And it should be divided by the number of hours that are actually being used. The amount of money coming in from.
The amount of money coming in from a per-table charge is more than what the square footage for the same amount of area for a 24-hour use with a permit is giving some of those restaurants. I'm concerned that it's too high for the use.
We put, we have, we have to know what the area is going to be then.
Correct. No, I think that we set an area. I, I, I would like to see us do a test and adjust phase if we can, and look at what this many tables looks like on the beach at night. And have some photos taken, and have some egress photos taken by the chief, and see what that looks like in terms of impacting both the safety aspect in the restaurant when they're not being used. Because part of the issue also that Jerry mentioned is, starting that late, I don't disagree with, I think the people that are using the beach during the day should have the ability to use the beach during the day. The challenge I have is knowing how a restaurant works and having to then stop your service halfway through the first round of seating to pull tables and chairs outside. So now you're creating additional traffic issues, and again, not, not our, not necessarily our problem, their, their job to work through, so that's fine, but I'm just saying it's part of the discussion that needs to be had, we should be seeing what it looks like and what that means, and what that adjustment would look like. The challenging part is not being able to see what everything looks like, because we're still in the June gloom and or non-summer quite all the way yet, this week and next week. The temperature's heating up, so people are gonna be using the beach more, but there's not a full picture of what this looks like until we get into July, to be honest. And I think we should set the dates for that, but I would argue that there's the possibility to have a few more tables than that, and be able to adjust it up to be able to accommodate more people and serve the public better, that would not take a significantly larger amount of space off of the beach. The restrictions in terms of distancing are not there outside anymore, right?
Right.
So tables don't have to be.
Six feet apart.
Six feet apart, eight feet apart.
Right.
Whatever they were supposed to be to begin with. I think if we can look at spacing and see what six tables looks like this week, and test that out for a couple of weeks and see how that goes, and look at seeing if we can do a few more, I think that there's space enough to be able to provide everyone the space they want to use for the beach and do that, and not cause a significant issue. My bigger concern is the storage of those items when they're not being used.
Right.
And that, I think, has to be approval by the fire chief to be able to maintain that permit.
Yeah. So Denise, I get...
May I summarize the, what I heard so far?
Yes.
As part of the motion, and then you can correct me. I've got the motion right now, as somewhat proposed by the three, at seven days a week, no daytime dining, set up at 5:30 PM, in lieu of a five or six table, that the tables will be based on a per-square footage. The per-square footage also seems to be the fee structure that council, that's part of this motion. No heaters, and that a plan must be submitted to the fire department to look at the egress and ingress on the beach as well as the storage options.
You send your Cindy, are we forgetting anything?
The rules from the ABC, everybody have, and turn in that paperwork as well.
So when are we stopping the daytime dining?
I think June 30th is reasonable.
I, yeah, I'd have no problem ending it at the end of the month.
Does that make sense? June 30? Okay.
I would ask that we, as part of the looking at this whole process, in July, if staff and council could make a point of checking in on a couple of days a week, for what that looks like without lunch use, how much of the beach is being utilized on different days, 4th of July week included, and the weeks after.
To see if there might be some, yeah, some, some give, I mean, like, like Bob says, there's gonna be something we're gonna be evaluating for quite a while, I think, but we gotta stay on top of it.
Fourth of July.
No, yeah, no 4th of July, no 4th of July, and I think the restaurants were already, I think, in agreement with that possibly.
No dinner on 4th of July, outside?
The beach on 4th, I don't, yeah, no.
No.
No. I think we had said that previously, though, was no 4th of July.
Okay, weekend, or just 4th of July?
Just 4th of July.
Okay, yeah, okay. Okay. Are we missing anything, Denise or Michael Palmer, or?
Was there any penalty?
Sorry, one more item, we talked about it early on, that we, it would be, even though the restaurants, we might be leasing this space or whatnot, they can't move people from the beach. If they're held up, you know, they've been there for the day or whatnot, I don't think it's appropriate to move people off the beach.
Agreed.
No, that's why they have to be pretty close to the Serpentine Wall.
I think the, if we set the square footage where we want that line of demarcation to be.
Yes.
Then that would allow people to sit on the beach and know where the line is, and that after a certain time at that line, they're gonna start setting up tables.
Right, right.
Have you discussed the rent yet?
Okay, I'm sorry, Denise or Scott, who wants to speak first?
Scott, I don't, I don't know if we've talked the rent yet, or what you're gonna charge. That's probably...
Let's, let's get the vote on this one first.
Right, yeah.
And, America, we add that the ABC proper paperwork needs to be, uh...
Of course.
In two weeks.
Yes.
During the deadline.
And was there any discussion or motion on penalty or fees for non-compliance?
Well, I think it's, you get a warning and then you're, and you lose your, and then you're done.
Are we setting a timeline, a sunset, or are we just coming back and reviewing maybe at the end of the summer?
Let's come back at the end of summer. I mean, somebody said it, I think a couple of you said it ended at September, but if the beaches now aren't busy then, then we might as well have them, it's, it helps the visitor, there's not gonna be as many people on the beach, and it's also little revenue for the city.
I think the end of...
What?
I just said I'd be fine to, to move forward and, and at the end of summer. And also, no yet today about health.
About what?
And having specific health department approval for these spaces.
You broke up there, Cindy, can you say that again?
You know what, Cindy, that's the health department's problem, that's not our issue. Health department comes to visit, that's their bailiwick, we're not gonna, we can't, I don't think we could dictate that, it's just the health department does what they Just my opinion. Okay, so there's a motion, and a second simmer?
I'll second, but Cindy, are you trying to talk, are you trying to get in?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Cindy.
I'm sorry, I wish we, I wish Lisa and I could help fix the internet on this, it's frustrating. And the last item, um, I, the summer, if that means we're gonna have a bingo or something, is not gonna be able to set...
Cindy, would you be able to call in instead? We really cannot hear.
For a night, and that goes the same with the beer garden. We, have you lost me completely?
It's, so you're saying on bingo nights, they, they wouldn't get in the way, and on movie nights, they wouldn't get in the way, and they need to be?
Right, and if we had an, yeah, if we had an event where, to have the beer garden for the night, or do the events that they've done year over year.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, that's, that's in there, I think, I think we're all agreeing, agreeing on that as well.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, a motion, a second. Any comments from either council or the Zoom?
I've received no comments.
Okay, let's call for the vote, Denise. Council, Councilmember De La Rosa?
I can do that.
Okay.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponse?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Okay.
Mayor, was that on all city property?
Sand park and city property, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
That went well? Okay.
Actually, no, we still have to decide.
It's time for a break, just a quickie.
You still have to decide what the rent is gonna be.
No, we're, we're gonna do that separately now. Wait, you're talking about...
You haven't voted on that yet.
We're going to do that, Annie's taking a five-minute break, or three minutes.
Got it.
Sorry, I'll be right back.
Understand. Understand.
Faster.
Oh, and we're in math.
Okay, and we're back from the break. Matt.
Aren't we going to do the rent?
We have to do the rent.
We have to do the rent.
Oh, God, I'm sorry, okay, then, yeah, thank you. Okay.
Sorry, ma'am.
So what was your... Matt, what do you think?
What do I think?
Yeah, get up here. What do you think about the rent?
You know, I just want to say I'm grateful for all the city lessees that have been paying their lease agreements during these difficult times. You know, we can make anything work, I understand the desire to make it parity with the other lessees. The beach is a different location than, say, the mole or the pier, but at the same time, you know, their access is limited, it's not a 24-hour-a-day use of public space. So I, you know, I think either... The rationale behind the per-table was that it was going to be easier for staff to monitor, but that's not to say we can't monitor a square-footage basis. And so, you know, my goal is just to make sure we're treating these potential new lessees, you know, as fairly as, you know, we've treated our other lessees. And so that's kind of my main concern with this, so.
So we just can't leave this decision up to finance? Okay. Thank you. So it would be good to be able to look at those numbers again on the square footage versus the... Because, okay, so, for example.
Square footage is 325.
Okay, so you got the Naughty Fox at however many square feet that is, for example. And I don't know if that's comparable to six tables on the beach, right? And then you say, well, the Naughty Fox is open, can be open for lunch and dinner, but we're just allowing, not allow, these people only be open for dinner. So there should be some way to figure that formula out.
I would think the space you're looking at, if we're looking at six tables to start, would be much more in line with the size of the Avalon Grill space than the Naughty Fox space. So if you think about the Avalon Grill space, that has, I think I want to say eight tables maybe there, and then looking at...
They got big ones there, too.
They do, but it's a number of, so if you look at the front, I think it's like, it's a couple of two tops at the front, a couple of four tops in the middle, and then the large table in the back. So if you think about that in terms of four tops instead, you're looking at probably maybe seven or eight tables, some of them are pushed together.
Basically.
Right. But looking at something like that in space, and then saying because the usage of hours is one-quarter of what they would be paying, I would assume that you would be looking at somewhere around, maybe the 625, 650 mark, a quarter of what the grill is paying.
A month?
And I think we are live, right?
I hope, yeah.
Yes.
So I think we should probably move on, because we already concluded that discussion, and I just want to make sure.
Well, we need to vote on a rent.
Said to vote on the rent. Separately, no?
Go ahead, Scott.
No, I was just saying, we still need to go on the rent, and remember that all this is subject to, once the Coastal Commission changes things, you know, they may require a local coastal permit for this, but we'll at least...
I don't think we would, but anyway, I'm not optimistic.
You know, if that happens, they just need to go to the planning commission and apply, and we can have the special planning commission do that, if it comes to that.
That's hundreds of dollars, I recall.
Hey, I took into consideration what Matt said, because I know I was the one who initially said, make it the same as the others. I don't agree with my own comment now, after thinking about it, but I'm just going to venture out there right now, I'm going to make a motion to charge $10 per table per day. And I, I think it would be, it's going to be a flat rate, it's going to be $1,800 a month, if you want the outdoor dining, and I think that's the fairest, and it's the easiest for the staff to reconcile. If we've already made an agreement to the number of tables, and I know, Lisa, you came around and said square footage, but I don't think you can fit more than, you know, six tables in a square-foot area. But I'm making a motion for $10 per table, $1,800 a month.
Okay, and then if I decide as a business owner, I only want four tables, then it'll just be reduced by that much, and I have to...
No, $1,800 a month, because some days you might want four tables, some days you might want six. I just pick a rate, and let's move forward, I mean, we're already allowing it to happen, so let's pick a rate. It's not right for the city staff to go down there and have to monitor, you know, your five inches outside of your space and all of that.
I like that thinking, Cindy, so I'm going to second it.
Okay, I just, okay, and I just want to comment, Endemic says that they have five tables out there. And so, to tell that guy now, you've got to have six and pay $1,800, when he says, I'm just going to do five, I don't think that's fair.
He doesn't have to have six.
That's his prerogative.
But he still has to pay the $1,800.
That everybody pay the same rate for the same amount of space. And if they want something different, they should bring that to the council separately.
Well, I think you have a motion and a second, and I like the way it's going, I just feel bad for the person who says, no, I only want four tables all summer long, and because somebody like him has a little of business, you know, and it's kind of a specialty food and all of that, so I'm feeling a little bad for Endemic.
Okay, well, well, let's, not tonight, obviously, because we've already spent two hours on this, but let's talk about all the retailers, too. It's not just the residents or the restaurants that hurt during this whole pandemic. So what we're now going to hear from is the retailers who are saying, we want some city space, too. I've already got those conversations started, I mean, I didn't start them, but I've already had them coming to me, and, you know, I mean, I feel bad for everybody. I feel bad for us, who had to be open during the whole pandemic and went way far under. So we, we have, we have to look at what's right for the greater good of the city. We need to feed the people coming over, we need to make sure that we do everything that we can to make sure the beaches are available for people, and we're allowing a little bit of space for the restaurants. I feel we are being fair to all concerned.
And to add on to that, Cindy, we're talking prime real estate.
Yeah.
So I, that's why I have no problem seconding this.
And just to clarify, it's my understanding that any of these lessees would be going back and would have a lease agreement, so we could, in theory, if, say, one business only wanted four tables, have that agreement at that rate for only four tables, and if he were to put five out one day, he would be in violation of his lease, and so I don't think administratively...
Would monitor that, though, would we have someone going down to the beach every day to check it?
If they, I think if these people know that we're serious about losing their permit, they're going to abide by it, I mean...
And we could keep it at the six, it's just a suggestion to put out.
Okay. There's a motion and a second, but I would like the little caveat of, no caveat on your part?
What caveat?
That if somebody says, I just want four tables for this whole time, this is my, this is my permit says this is, and I only want four, that it just be reduced. And I don't think that's difficult for anybody.
I can work with that.
Cindy, can you work with that?
So four, four tables is...
$1,200.
$1,200.
$120, or, I'm sorry, $1,200 a month.
Exactly.
Just 300 a table.
It's basically 300 a table, yeah, that's a nice way of looking at it.
Yeah, I could do that, I can amend my motion, four, four tables for 1,200 a month, or six tables for 1,800.
Michael, do you accept that amendment?
I accept that amendment.
Okay, but what if I want five tables?
Don't start.
1,800. It's just $300 a table up to six. That's simple. Okay, if you don't want to do that, I'm not going to vote no on it, because we're going to move forward, but I would just like the flexibility if somebody says, I want five, 300 a table just seems very simple to me.
I like the idea.
Table, please call for the vote.
For your vote, your, okay, go ahead.
Wait, so what is it we're going on?
Did we ask for public comment?
Public comment?
I have no public comment.
Okay.
So what is the most...
Cap.
So repeat the motion.
Yeah, one more time, please.
The motion is to approve four tables for $1,200 a month, or six tables for $1,800 a month.
Thank you.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponte?
Aye.
Mayor Phil Tim Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye with reservation, but, okay.
I'm sure you can get one.
No, they don't take reservations. Okay, thank you. It's warm.
It's warm.
Denise is in here to turn the air conditioner on.
For me to be warm. Okay. Do you want to just postpone this until another day?
No, I think a lot of the presentation will go by relatively quick, and then, you know, a lot of the discussion, you know, we can have it tonight, and, you know, we also will have the two hours at the 24th, and if we need more time, we can always have another. But I'll try to keep the presentation as short as possible, that way we can have more of a dialogue. So, let's jump right in. We remember on last year's budget discussion, really, our overriding goal was to minimize the required draws on reserves while maintaining essential services. If that was our overarching goal in last year's budget, I'd say this was to present a structurally balanced budget, and that's where our non-recurring revenues aren't used to cover ongoing or recurring expenditures. You know, as I was putting together the revenue estimates, you know, I strive to maintain still a conservative approach to those estimates. We've had really three pretty strong number months as far as city revenues go, and while it's very encouraging, I'm also want to pump the brakes just a little and express some caution. It is still a dynamic situation, and, you know, while the early indicators are that it's going to be a very good summer, you know, if anything, by being conservative with our estimates, we'll just be setting ourselves up, hopefully, in a position where we can restore reserves quicker, and then we can kind of build on those reserves and use them to achieve, you know, council's goals. So jumping into the first slide, this is a kind of a summary of the budget as adopted compared to my recent estimates as included in the budget document. The difference in beginning balances, in the budget presentation, I used the estimated cash balance, and the bottom row, in the estimated budget, I used the unreserved fund balance based on the audited financials. So as you can, kind of going left or right.
The slides are not being presented on the PowerPoint.
I can fix that. Any luck now?
I see.
Starting, there you go, yes.
Perfect, apologize for that. So, again, the far-left column is the beginning balance that was used as part of last year's budget, and the difference between the number used in the budget and the number used in my estimate in this year's budget is the difference between the estimated cash balance versus the unrestricted fund balance. So you can see in the general fund, we expected to have to draw on $1 million almost in reserves just to operate, and I'm very happy to report that a combination of revenues exceeding estimates, state and federal aid, as well as additional budget savings through furloughs and other cost-saving measures, we're actually reporting an operating gain of 1.7 million in the general fund. Again, that's before any capital outlays, before any transfers to other funds, and including the harbor fund, which will need a transfer from the general fund. So again, moving left or right, you can see the capital outlays from the budget versus the latest estimates. When I put together the estimates, it's based on our actual spend through May 30th, plus my forecast for June and any period 13 spend. So you can see in the general fund, before transfer to the harbor, we were looking at draws on reserves of 1.8 million. And now, even after the transfers to the harbor, we should be adding a little to our general fund reserves. Our general fund reserves estimated are 4.9 million, which is just shy of that six-month target. I want to express caution, the six-month target was really based on the assumption that the other funds have a healthy fund balance as well, and so while I might feel comfortable with a six-month reserve in the general fund, if all the other funds had hit their target levels, the harbor fund, which we'll discuss in more detail, really has exhausted all of its reserves, and for that reason, I, you know, while we're in a much better position than I thought we would be, I still want to express some caution, and that six months was really set, assuming those other funds also had a healthy fund balance. So again, this is kind of an update on a slide I've given previously, and this is really just reconciling how, I'm happy to say how off we were in our original budget estimates. So you can see TOT exceeded our budget estimates by over $1 million. We really had a really strong March and April, and so that's why it exceeded even some of my best-case scenarios. Our April TOT came in up 40% from April of 2019. That include both gains in hotels, as well as vacation rentals. As you can see, the American Rescue Plan monies are in there as well. Other revenues, why that exceeded even my prior estimates, is we get a residual and pass-through property tax through our RPTTF distribution, and so essentially, there's a, when there's a residual balance after the enforceable obligations from our former redevelopment agency are paid, there's an additional distribution distributed to the other taxing entities. We get an estimate from our consultant, but my assumption is that it's a pretty conservative estimate, just because there's a lot of variables that can impact what that pass-through amount is, though I'm going to be looking at that number more closely during the year to try to get a better estimate going forward. Again, sales tax, not to the same degree of TOT necessarily, but sales tax have beat our budget estimates, as well as we had some non-budgeted labor savings through the furloughs and deferred capital spend. And so that number at the bottom is before the transfer to the harbor fund, but you can see, just looking at the general fund by itself, we had a really strong year, given all those factors. Similar story with the harbor fund, but not to the same degree. Again, the first row is the kind of fund balance schedule based on the budget that was adopted in October, using cash as the starting point. If we use working capital, which I did for the estimate used in this budget document, you can see there's about a $500,000 difference, which I'll show again in a later slide. Even still, there was an operating gain in the harbor of 800,000. Again, this is combining our harbor capital and harbor operating funds. We'll break that out separately to show what each fund did individually, but they are ultimately combined in our financials, so I have combined them here. You can see there are transfers required in the harbor fund of 980,000. 150,000 of that comes from a CARES Act funding through Metro, and the remainder, the 830,000, would be subsidized by the general fund, even in, either in the form of a loan or a transfer to the harbor. And then, you know, with that, the, after that transfer, I do have a net increase in the reserve or fund balance, and with an ending balance of just over 100. So what I could do is reduce the amount needed to transfer from the general fund, I plugged in a number to try to get it to balance out, and we can always adjust that accordingly. Again, a similar chart, trying to explain, you know, what the difference is between what we had previously budgeted and where we are looking at currently. As you can see, other than the mole change order, revenues have exceeded our estimates in the budget. Part of this was, I think, by design, but part of it is just beyond what we, I think, reasonably could have expected, and I'll go into that in a little more detail in another slide. You can see our transfer revenues for transfers of moorings greatly exceeded our estimates this year. That's another number where I'm going to, going forward, we'll always budget that number at a lower level, because it's hard to predict, looking back 10 years, I've seen that number as low as 80,000 and as high as 600,000 in a given year. And so I think it's important that we are particularly conservative on that revenue target, and then any gains, we can use that to help build up reserves or use for one-time capital needs. So again, you can see even through those savings, and the difference, why the non-budget labor savings is so high, in the previous estimate, I didn't factor the admin savings, which harbor does benefit from, because the harbor does pay a considerable amount of overhead costs for City Hall, finance, payroll, et cetera. So you can see that with all that, we were kind of going into the year looking at nearly 2 million drawn reserves from the harbor, and with the combination of those additional revenues and cost-saving measures, we're really only going to be looking at draws of around 750,000. So while definitely positive news, I think there was good cause for us to use the estimates we did in last year's budget. This is pulled from a Visit California. Statewide tourism spending was down in calendar year 2020, 45%, compared to, and Avalon, our visitor-driven revenues over that same period, so January through December of 2020, we're only down 33%. If all we did was meet state averages, that would have been another 1.7 million less in visitor-driven revenues through December. As I mentioned earlier, our March and April revenues that we've actually received have come in much stronger than I ever would have thought, particularly during January and February, when we were still under pretty heavy restrictions. And again, also factored in, those revenue gains are, spread over two years, about 900,000 in state and federal aid between the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan. So again, this is a budget overview, really just focusing on the activity in the current year's budgets, and not focused on the beginning or ending reserves. You can see operating revenues in the general fund are 10.7 million. Included in that number is 340,000 from the rescue plan, as well as about 600,000 in various planning grant documents. Those planning grants have one-time expenditures in the operating expenditure category, so while they are one-time revenues, they're really offset by one-time expenditures, and the 346,000 in the American Rescue Plan can go towards funding those net capital outlays or at-one-time expenditures there, and that's why I'm able to say we're presenting a balanced, structurally balanced budget. Working our way down, you can see in the harbor fund, again, this is combining both funds, we'll break those out separately. The goal would be next year not to have to subsidize any activity in the harbor through the general fund, and there are draws in the sewer and solid waste fund. Those were planned draws as part of the cost-of-service study, and the goal would be as those rates increase, or if we were able to find cost-saving measures, that those would correct that in future budgets. But that was part of the plan in the cost-of-service study. So focusing on general fund to operating revenues, going left or right, what I've done is I put the fiscal year 19 actuals, going through time at the end to the fiscal year 22 budget. See, our fiscal year 19 actuals, so the last year that wasn't impacted at all by COVID, we had TOT of approximately 5.4 million. In the current year that we're in right now, we're estimated to collect TOT of approximately 5.13 million, and all I've done is budget roughly the same amount in next year's budget. While I do think there's a lot of reasons to think that our TOT is going to exceed what we were able to do in a pandemic year, there still is a lot of uncertainty, given the nature of the pandemic, as well as potential increased competition as sporting events, amusement parks, potentially international travel at some point in the next fiscal year opens up. And so the benefit of using that number, which I think, hopefully, we will have a better year than that, is those increased revenues can help go towards rebuilding those reserves. Property tax, if you can see, it's fairly consistent across the board, with the exception of fiscal year 21. Again, that was that RPTTF pass-through property tax revenue that we got this year. I'm investigating to see if that's something we can count on in future years, but to be conservative, I've kind of gone with our historic average for that revenue, and so that's why it's more in line with other years. Sales tax, that's provided by our sales tax consultant, HDL. Admissions tax, again, the goal was to find a number somewhere between our fiscal year 19 high and our current year. Admission tax has kind of been impacted more than other visitor-driven revenues. That being said, March and April were strong months for that revenue source, so there is hope. is hope that that number is on the low side as well. And ambulance fees is a difficult one for me to estimate, there is a lag, and a lot of it is tied to number of visitors on the island, and while greatly appreciative of the numbers we have seen, cruise ship passengers do make up approximately a fourth of our visitors, and so, not that that necessarily means they make up a fourth of our ambulance visitors, but that is something to consider also with that revenue. And then lastly, that other revenue, why it's particularly high in the current year's budget, that does include the 600,000 approximately of planning-related grants, as well as the rescue plan, 340,000. So similar story in the harbor, moving left to right, fiscal year 19 actuals to fiscal year 22 budget. The cross-channel wharfage is the largest revenue in the harbor. Right now, it's budgeted at 90% of the pre-COVID fiscal year 19. Again, we've had strong months in March and April, and there's, and May as well, and there's a reason to hope that continues. But again, I want to try to break the habit of needing a record-setting year, year after year, just to break even, and so that way, if we do see revenue gains beyond 90% of kind of our pre-COVID norm, we can use those revenues to restore reserves. Nightly mooring fees in the harbor, this was a particularly strong year for harbor nightly mooring revenues. And again, I wanted to be optimistic yet cautious, and I don't want to set a number that would require another record-setting year in the harbor, given, you know, increased opportunity potentially for international travel, you know, as well as just other competition as far as destinations. Cruise ship wharfage is a number that we are looking at closely. I want to provide kind of the rationale of how I came to that number, and I'll try to provide in more detail at the next meeting how exactly I come up with it, but that's based on the cruise ships currently scheduled to come to Avalon beginning December 1st. So we do have cruise ships technically scheduled to arrive in July, but I don't expect to see them. Is there a possibility we see cruise ships before December 1st? Absolutely. But again, I was trying to set a date with that that I felt reasonably confident could hit. And then I also did, based on the ships we have scheduled, reduced the number of ships by 20%, just to assume there will be some cancellations in that ship count as well.
To me, it seems a little bit high, based on that cruise ship meeting that we had the other day, because they were saying basically not till September or October, and Disney not until January. And not that Disney comes here a lot, but, and I know we're going to get an extra buck from them, right?
So in the fiscal year 19, our wharfage rate was 350, and our wharfage rate currently, or as of July 1st, will be $5 per passenger, so that is a factor. So if you do look at fiscal year 19 versus 20, they were almost the same, but fiscal year 20 didn't have any cruise ships for the last quarter of the year, and really almost the last third of the year. Another factor is, right now at least, I don't believe we have any cruise ships that are currently scheduled to meet the marketing and promotion discount. So remember, if there's two cruise ships with more than 50 a year, there's a reduced per-passenger rate on that second ship.
That's right, yeah.
But again, at the next meeting, I will look at that number again and make sure that it is aligned with the current cruise ship schedule, and if we need to make adjustments, we will.
Because I know you, I appreciate that you're being conservative on a lot of these other things, you know, so.
And it's important that we are on all of them, so if that cruise ship number does look high, again, I'll try to provide more detail at the 24th meeting to show how I came up with that, but if there's a reason to reduce that, you know, we can look for that and then look for other cost savings then to offset that.
Right.
So again, moving down, pure and tidlin rentals, I did not factor any additional rents from waterfront dining, but if we are, as it seems we're pursuing that, those would be harbor, harbor revenues, as the dining's in the harbor waterfront.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Again, harbor use fees, the rationale is getting closer to our fiscal year 19 actuals, and similar with ad tax as well. We've had a couple businesses in the harbor had particularly strong shoulder seasons and spring seasons, and so we had a new record in a COVID year for ad tax collections in the harbor, which, you know, is a credit to those businesses, and we're definitely appreciative of that benefit. And then lastly, in the other revenues, the largest one in there would be either our annual mooring fees, which generate about 275,000 a year, or thereabouts, as well as transfer fees. So if you see in the 21 estimate, it is higher than prior years, that's really because our transfer revenues were higher than the past couple years. So again, if I were to summarize the harbor revenues, we're looking at much stronger than fiscal year 20 or 21 then, that we experienced, but not quite to the same level of our pre-COVID 19. Again, there's, I think, reason to be optimistic that we could see even stronger revenues in the harbor, but my goal with the budget is kind of, again, to break that cycle, so if we do have a, you know, non-record-setting year, it doesn't blow up the operating budget. So now we're kind of leaving the revenue side of the discussion and kind of getting more into the expenditure side. I do have slides prepared that kind of detail out the maintenance and operating and contract services budget. My thought was to kind of go through the entire presentation, and then if there are questions on particular funds or particular departments, to answer the questions the best I can, or defer to the department head, who ultimately is managing that budget. And then there are also some slides at the end to go, kind of at a high-level overview of the planned capital projects for next year. So again, in the proposed budget, there's an end of furloughs that were implemented in response to the second shutdown, that would go into effect at the start of the next fiscal year if adopted. The proposed budget also includes a restoration of permanent part-time employees to full-time, so one of the cost-saving measures adopted as part of the last budget was certain employees were put on a permanently reduced schedule of, say, 24 hours or 30 hours a week. Those formerly full-time employees would be restored back to full-time in the proposed budget. Again, this budget does not include any step increases or promotions, and it does also continue the reduced MOU benefits that were adopted as part of last year's budget adoption. Again, the overarching message of this budget was to try to, you know, be as conservative as we could, while still recognizing the need to restore staffing and services.
Matt, is there the possibility, at the mid-year budget review, to look at step increases in promotions?
There is always the possibility to bring back, really, any budget matter at any time, so if we had a particularly strong summer and we felt it, or if council feels it's prudent, we absolutely could do that at any point in the year. Summer is our most crucial time of the year. I'm not saying we could also include it now, I'm not saying we couldn't do that, but we could bring that back at any time.
Just a reminder too, MOUs will expire next June, June 30th of 2022, so the city will be looking to make negotiations as we move closer to that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So this is kind of a condensed summary of the full-time equivalent by department on the left, and then on the right, what the kind of changes are between the last year's budget and the current year. Just a few things to point out that aren't necessarily apparent. Included in administration is two code enforcement employees, as well as a new front-counter admin assistant, and a new city clerk beginning at the mid-year. Other increases from the 7.2 to the 9.5 is there are a number of those permanent part-time employees that were part of admin in last year's budget being restored to full-time. And so really, the increase from the fiscal year 20 to 22 is that city clerk position at mid-year. Finance does include a senior accountant beginning in October. That position was previously in fiscal year 17, 18, 19, 20 budgets, and so it has been added back as well. Community service, something that's not apparent, is we do have one public works employee, maintenance worker dedicated to community service. When we do have a dedicated maintenance worker to a particular department, historically, we've grouped them with that department, not with public works. So the rationale is to be consistent with prior year budgets for comparison purposes, but it's not necessarily apparent there. Again, with fire, the reason there's more than the 10 fire personnel is their average, their regular schedule includes 2,700 some regular hours, so the first 53 hours of their work week are considered regular time, and any time over that then goes to overtime. So based on that, as a full-time equivalent, there's, they count as more than one person, but there are just the 10 fire personnel from a headcount. So planning includes a restoration of a permanent part-time, as well as a planner position to be added in October. It's not a planning director position, it's a planner position, and Mike or Denise could speak to that more if there are questions. Again, with public works, I think you can see on the chart, public works has been the most impacted department as far as staffing. Couple things that aren't necessarily apparent, though, in that number, is we did include a third garage mechanic in the fiscal year 19 and 20 budgets as a placeholder for a litigation matter, but we never had filled that position at any point. We are increasing, from a headcount standpoint, in the budget, in the proposed budget, one additional full-time public works maintenance personnel, but the reason for the decrease is we did have a separation at mid-year, as well as there are a number of public works employees that were scheduled or retired during the middle of the year, and those people counted as, say, .3, .4 FTEs in last year's budget, and so that accounts for some of the difference. Again, in the harbor, the one thing that might not be apparent is there are three dedicated harbor maintenance personnel included in that FTE count, and again, that was to be consistent with prior budgets. So again, this is a summary of the general fund, left to right, fiscal year 19 actuals to the 22 proposed. So as you can see, from an operating standpoint, we were drawing on existing reserves in the 19 budget just to operate in the general fund. This is before any capital projects or transfers to other funds. You can see in fiscal year 20, a lot of that, or part of that, was impacted due to lost revenues from COVID, but we also had to draw on reserves in fiscal year 20 in the general fund. Our budget saw significant draws required, but as already discussed, due to a combination of increased revenues and unbudgeted savings from the furloughs implemented at the middle of the year, we actually saw significant operating revenues. And in the proposed budget, we do have operating revenues of almost 900,000. Again, that's before any transfers to other funds or any capital projects in the general Again, I just wanted to highlight that there is 396,000 in CARES Act and Rescue Plan monies in fiscal year 21's figure, and 346,000 in fiscal year 22's. So again, this is a summary by department within the general fund. For public works in the general fund, public works employees' time are divided up amongst multiple funds, including the harbor, as well as the sewer and saltwater funds, and so that 4.9 is based on their allocated time, not an actual headcount, if you will. And in the future, or in the next slides, we go through each of these in greater detail. The other thing that might not be immediately apparent is in the other general fund activity. The 1.2 full-time equivalence, that's what we charge for managing our successor agency. We're able to charge a portion of the city manager's time, the finance director's time, and other staff time for the management of those processes, and those are reimbursed as part of our administrative allowance. In the contract services and other general fund activity, that's largely the hospital sales tax pass-through. So again, it's a net zero to the city, it's reflected in the revenues, and the exact same amounts reflected in the expenditures, but it does appear in this table. And again, I'm not going to go through each one of these in detail, but if there are questions at the end of the presentation of a particular department or schedule, we're happy to field those questions. I did want to walk through, just a way to kind of read it. I have grouped it salaries and benefits, I didn't break that out in detail, but what's included in there is wages, employer taxes, insurance, CalPERS contributions, as well as unfunded liability divided out based on the employees, and so that's really what's driving that figure. The pay rates are based on pay schedules the council's adopted, the CalPERS rates are dictated to us from CalPERS based on actuarials, and so that's how we arrive at that figure. Again, maintenance and operation, what I've tried to do is break it down. In some instances, I've combined a couple accounts, just to try to get it to fit on one page, but we can talk about any of those in particular. Then again, to highlight at the bottom, we do allocate general admin, insurance, and vehicle maintenance across the different funds, based on their kind of weighted average, if you will, share of those costs. So again, I'm not going to go through all of them, but we've broken them down by department, so we have a slide for law enforcement, for general fund, public works, for planning. I will call out that there are a number of various planning report projects at different stages, largely grant-funded, I have broken those out for approximate cost, but again, with those figures, the vast majority of that is coming back in grant funding, 90-plus And recreation. And then the other general fund, so what's also included in the other general fund are maintenance and operating costs for the cemetery, for the storm drain system, as well as for that successor agency admin and the hospital pass-through that I already had mentioned. So moving into the harbor fund, again, similar to the general fund, I wanted to show how we were operating pre-pandemic to the budget, to what's being proposed in this year's current budget. So as you can see, that in fiscal year 19, the harbor operating fund, so this is just Fund 103, the harbor also has Fund 104 dedicated to capital projects, which we'll break down separately. Just for harbor operations, pre-COVID, we were drawing on reserves in a fairly considerable amount just to operate in the harbor. And again, I've instead broken it down by kind of major category spend instead of department. So again, where the biggest impact really was, was the first several months of the pandemic. You know, part of the challenge is the harbor is even more so than the general fund and hotels, very cyclical, and losing a, you know, late spring season is a much different story than losing a December-January. You know, and while we did implement a number of cost-saving measures, including furloughs, really at the start of the pandemic, you know, some of the major cost-saving measures in the harbor kind of took time to work into place, so that's why you see really a large draw in last fiscal year, and we were really working to minimize that draw in the current Again, just to point out, the city does have a loan with the Department of Boating and Waterways for the reconstruction of the bathrooms at the mole back from 1993. We have always included it in the operating fund, rather than the capital fund, and so it's here listed. The one positive thing is this year is the last payment, so right before we start a new mole, we've paid for the old one, so. Again, here, I've broken down the harbor operating fund, kind of by operating units within the harbor. Administration includes the harbor master and the harbor admin. The reason it's 1.9 is a portion of the harbor master's time is also charged to the capital fund for his management of the capital projects, along with the public works director, a portion of his time. Operations includes really three categories of employee, if you will. There are 12.6 full-time and part-time harbor patrol officers. There are also three dedicated harbor maintenance personnel, and two parking control/harbor sanitation personnel. And so in a later slide, I'll break down what each is relative share of the And so in a later slide, I'll break down what each is relative share of that salary and benefit cost is. Maintenance and operations in the operating category largely is from utility charges. The harbor does pay the sewer, saltwater, and solid waste fund, a not insignificant amount as far as its operating budget. Major contracts in operations is the shoreboat subsidy. And in the public works category, the major contracts are lifeguard contract with the county, our restroom maintenance, and our waterfront trash collection. So again, I'm not going to go into all of these in detail, but if there are particular questions either tonight or even anytime before our next study session, we'd be happy to go through any of those. Again, just to point out, we broke down the salaries and benefits cost by the employee type in the harbor operations slide. So you can see the breakdown of patrol versus maintenance versus parking control and sanitation. So again, with the harbor capital fund, so Fund 104, there is a portion of the $3 per passenger each-way wharfage is dedicated to helping fund harbor capital projects. So of that $3, about 1.2 of it, it's, let's see, it's 25% of $2.50 plus the additional 50 cents. So again, it's roughly 1.8 of that $3 goes to operations and 1.2 to capital. A portion of the public works director and harbor master's time is charged for managing the capital projects in the harbor. There are some capital maintenance that gets charged to the fund as well. So every year, there are repairs made to the floats and wharfs that maybe aren't capitalized because they're not to either the dollar threshold or they don't extend, create additional years of life. They just maintain the structures within the harbor. And so after those capital maintenance costs, there's about $950,000 in funding that can be used as the local match for any harbor projects grants or as just capital cost for various projects. And before I showed, the harbor was adding, I want to say, $150,000 or so to reserves in the current year budget. You know, and while in some ways that's, you know, not an insignificant amount, I just also want to keep in mind that, you know, as we have some major projects in the harbor and when they get to the construction phase, as we saw with, you know, mole phase one, those construction costs can add up quick. And so while we did defer some capital maintenance in last year's budget, and I think that's seen in some of the increased spend in the proposed budget, we do need to be mindful of building up some reserves. I know Mike is pursuing additional grant opportunities for some of those major projects. And while, you know, early talks are promising, we need to make sure we're in a position to where we can pay for those should those talks not progress as we hope. So again, this is just a breakdown of kind of those capital maintenance costs I discussed previously. So the largest one is kind of the annual float maintenance costs, mooring maintenance, maintenance of premises, things of that nature. And this is a breakdown of the other enterprise funds. So as you can see, there is a portion of employees' time charged to these funds, but it's a relatively small portion in the sewer. It's primarily public works maintenance workers in both sewer and saltwater. Solid waste, the half a full-time equivalent is our two code enforcement officers do have a portion of their time charged to the solid waste fund, as well as an admin, a admin analyst has a portion of her time in the Avalon Transit Fund. So as you can see, the major costs are associated with our contracted services for the management of the wastewater treatment plant, which is divided up between the sewer fund, the saltwater fund, and the storm drain fund, which is part of the general fund. But the majority of it is charged to the harbor fund, or excuse me, the sewer fund. And again, in solid waste, contract services do make up the largest portion. And I'll go in the next slide of kind of what makes up those figures. So again, in the sewer, some of the other professional services relate to odor management and other auditing and permitting requirements. And some of them have the label of CDO, but a lot of the requirements from the CDO, even as the CDO has lifted our annual requirements that have to be still maintained by the city. And so maybe the wording should be updated on that. But it's not that, you know, those requirements necessarily went away when the CDO did. Again, in solid waste, kind of the key portions relate to our Avalon Environmental Contract as well as the estimated increase to that contract comply with SB 1383. Again, that is an estimated figure. We don't, we're still currently working with the contractor, but the assumption is that if the same level of service were to be maintained, there would be an increased cost as there would be a need for a third truck and a crew to staff that third truck. And so that increase was estimated for budget purposes. And for this year, it's only estimated at half the year because those requirements wouldn't go into effect until January 1st. Again, in capital outlay, that is the landfill trust contribution. And so that's based on the assumption that the landfill has seven years of useful life, and we would need to save approximately $2.5 million in those next seven years in order to fully fund those estimated closure and post-closure costs. One of the strategies we are looking at, which would potentially add to the useful life of the landfill, which would reduce the annual required contributions to the landfill, would be to try to extend through the height capacity. But there are some permitting and engineering costs associated with getting that approval. And so those are that $100,000 that's reflected at the top under contract services. Again, that's an estimate. The estimate we have is $300,000, and which we split over a 30-year period.
And we have no money in that landfill trust at all.
No, we do. We have $2.6 million dedicated to it. The closure costs, though, are about $5 million, and so we have seven years. So we did escalate the increase over time. So while in the first year, the five-year cost of service study, we're putting aside about $270,000, I think towards the end, we're putting aside closes that are $350,000 or $400,000 a year for that.
And just to add, if we're successful in increasing the height of the landfill, the contribution to the post-closure cost would actually slightly decrease because we wouldn't need to expense quite the same amount of money at the pace we were doing because it wouldn't close as fast as we originally thought.
And so again, when we do the cost of service study, I have to take a conservative approach while I'm hopeful that, you know, if we do pursue those extending, that we'd be able to create savings down the road. I need to plan kind of for the worst, and that would be figuring out how to pay for the closure costs in the next seven years. So ISF, it's Internal Service Funds. Another way you can think of it is kind of the overhead costs to the different departments. General administration is the largest one, and that includes elected legal administration, which is city manager's office, finance, and then general government. Some of the things that might not be immediately, one I will recognize Scott did lower the legal amounts, and I didn't provide a slide detailing legal separately, but I can do that for the next meeting. But that legal amount is reduced from prior years, and the current year spend in legal is considerably less than what we had budgeted. So hopefully Scott keeps that down. And let's see, any others to call out right now? Another that might not be apparent is the salaries and benefits in general government. That's our other post-employment benefit. So retirees with a certain level of service have certain medical costs covered by the city, and that's the funded account where we charge those related costs. So that's how you can have zero people, yet salaries and benefits of $190,000. Insurance is our general liability. Insurance with Parsac, soon to be SERA, but we'll probably end up coming at Parsac for another five years knowing us, as well as any litigation, ongoing litigation costs would fall in there as well. And then vehicle maintenance would be the garage, which we have currently the two mechanics full-time, as well as their maintenance and operating costs. So the next few slides kind of break down in more detail what's included in those figures. Again, we can speak to any of them tonight or, you know, between now and the next meeting or at the next meeting, but I wanted to provide it in kind of as reviewable of a format as I could. And moving then into IT, and I know this is a lot of information in a short amount of time, but if we can just touch on the capital outlays portion, and then we can go with any questions or discussion. I am pretty proud to have in this budget $100,000 set aside for fire vehicle replacement. Our fire chief did provide me with a vehicle replacement schedule estimate. While it's not a final one, it's, you know, it's a starting point for us to set monies aside. That being said, if we were to, if we were to fund it exactly to the schedule as currently presented, we would need to be setting aside $300,000 a year, not the $100,000. And if we weren't successful in pursuing a ladder truck grant, that number, again, according to a preliminary draft schedule, we would need to be setting aside $500,000 a year. And so while it is an accomplishment that we are setting monies aside, it's not where we need to be. And so one of the goals I'm going to have with all the departments is really formalize our vehicle replacement schedule so we can charge every department kind of the true replacement costs for the fleet as well as for significant equipment purchases. And that way, even if we're not fully funding those costs, we're at least aware of what those costs should be. We have a rough idea now, but I think a formal schedule that we could share with council is where we need to be as a city. And so that's something that I'm looking to include in future budgets. That being said, it is $100,000 that I didn't give to Mike Krug in the last couple of years, so.
Just in time, Mike.
Joe Machado loan repayment, I believe after this year, we still have two years left for those repayments. Other park improvements that aren't grant-funded for $20,000 are included in the budget. Dan's not here tonight, but at the next meeting, he'd be able to speak to kind of what his plans are for those funds if adopted. The Crescent Avenue stairs were something that were included in the current year's budget. You know, it's my understanding that it is a real need to address, it was a benefit to be able to defer it while, you know, given the uncertainties in the current year. But it's my understanding that's a real need for public safety. Similarly, Pebbley Beach Road repairs in the Five Corner Project didn't really have as much capital spend in the current budget as maybe was anticipated when the budget was adopted. Well, that provided a temporary benefit. We do have that planned spend in the current year's budget. The one thing of note, though, with the Five Corners is we are planning on using a portion of our SB 1 funds. So that was the additional gas tax road maintenance to help cover some of our local match. And so while I have a draw on fund balance, that's really going to be covered by those SB 1 funds. Cemetery improvements for $25,000. Again, Bob Greenlaw could speak to it better than I could, but my understanding is there's some roofing needs and some other upgrades needed at the cemetery included there. And then other general fund projects, not to dwell on these, these are generally kind of annual maintenance or annual upkeep of buildings and facilities. I did create another slide kind of detailing what those costs are. As you can see, it's traffic transportation improvements, building facility improvements. Bonita Way stairs, that would really just start the preliminary engineering. And this slide may not have been included in what I'd previously shared with council. I don't know what versions we're looking at. But I did, I guess I should have said this at the beginning, I do have a copy of this presentation on the finance department's webpage, so it's cityofavlon.com/finance. Scroll down about a third of the way down the page, there's a title for budget, and then it's the budget document, and this presentation have been uploaded there. Again, with Bonita Way stairs, it's really just some preliminary engineering, and most of the construction costs would be in future year budgets, and then some just upgrades and improvements. Similarly, as a breakdown of the harbor, a lot of the major capital projects in the harbor's budget from last year or from the current year did end up getting kind of pushed to this year. There were some spend, but not to the levels necessarily anticipated. Major projects include the Caprio Mole Phase 2. That would be, I believe, finishing the engineering and potentially starting some construction. But again, Bob could speak to that better than I can. The other thing I wanted to call out, though, is for the float rehabilitation. That's specifically for floats 2 and 3, and would be included as part of the mole Phase 2 plans. I know a priority for council that's been pushed out of other budgets has been the casino weigh improvements. That's to the arch on the way to the casino. We have included that in this year's budget. As I understand it, is a priority in the harbor. Kind of going into more detail on that other category, if you will, a large portion is South Beach sand replenishment and seawall. That potentially could be combined as one project. We have it currently separate, but if we're pursuing, or we are pursuing grant opportunities, and we would try to involve kind of both aspects in the project scope. Harbor Master building repairs, it's my understanding that the roof's leaking on oar and try to keep him dry. That and a fresh coat of paint, I guess it's been a few years since that's taken place. A lot of that work, my understanding, would be done by city staff, but that is something that we have included in this budget. A lot of the smaller stuff are kind of annual costs that we have each year, whether it's fresh paint on the patrol boats or replacement of certain anchor chains or replacement of the security cameras. Lastly, there is the underground fuel tank. We do have grant funds for that, and it looks like I did not include that in the budget. My understanding is, I believe, we have $500,000 of that to be funded by grants and whatever costs above that, currently estimated, I think, 600 or 650. So our local match would be that 100, 150,000. But it looks like I did not include the grants in this year's budget. So we could use the grants now, or we could use them when we get more into the construction. And then lastly, just kind of a summary by other funds. The capital outlays in the housing authority primarily relate to the 206 East Whitley remodel. And I believe there is some monies in there for the exploration of additional units. Again, we could add or take that out or, you know, discuss that in more detail at either now or at the future meeting. Street administration is just some annual kind of street maintenance, pothole improvements, things of that nature. CDBG would be 100% grant-funded, and the plan would be to use that to continue the ADA work for accessibility curb cuts for ADA access, things of that nature. And again, that would be 100% covered by those CDBG funds. The sewer and saltwater was really driven by the 10-years, the most recently completed 10-year CIP plan. So we looked at what year we're in, and that also was considered as part of the cost of service study. The solid waste fund, as previously mentioned, is that landfill trust contribution. And then general administration, those are generally some IT improvements. I know it's improvements to the server room in the harbor, as well as looking into a VoIP phone system upgrade. Again, Pat or Mike Palmer could probably speak to the technical side of that much better than I could, but that's kind of a general what those funds would be for. So with that, that was the presentation for the budget. I know that was a lot of information to pack in, but I'm here to answer any questions as well as the department heads if there are particular questions about any of the department's operating budgets.
So I have a question about public work. And I guess you give us these numbers in so many different ways that putting them all together is kind of difficult for me. So at one time, they had 19 people in public work, I think it was something like that. And now it's down to 13 or something like that. And now it's down to 13, or something like that, right, Bob?
Yeah.
Okay. So I don't know if it's because you put some of them over here and some of them over there, or are you just down, and one of them went to, to Dan, so that would be 14.
The, the ones in the community service in the harbor have always been in those categories, so that's consistent. So he is down about six.
Human beings.
Human beings.
Okay.
Well, that, well, correct. So in prior budgets, there would probably be four people, two full-time equivalents. So in previous budgets prior to COVID, we had four part-time public works maintenance, so probably eight to, you know, eight or so human beings, six full-time equivalents.
I guess, I, I don't know what we can do, but I would like us to be able to look at what we could do to increase that, because there's a lot of work going on and needing to be, needing to happen. And if you're saying, well, this is a balanced budget, okay, Annie, so if you want another body, where do we take it from? Is that my question to answer, or is that your question to answer, where it comes from?
Can be both our questions. So what I can do is show at the next study session what an additional one or two, or however many maintenance workers would look like, and then propose some ways to help pay for that cost. So that, yeah, if, if you have suggestions of, of things that we can do for cost saving, we absolutely can incorporate those into the budget.
No.
Or if, if you're going to put the challenge on me, I'll challenge accepted.
Okay, 'cause that, uh, uh, well, maybe we can get all these volunteers to do all the work, right? That we get with our new volunteer program.
Not if I have to fill out that application.
I don't mean to be facetious, but I guess I am. Yeah, so the public works thing, it seems like, I don't know, is there any way we can replace this floor up here at the dais? Oh my God, it's a hazard. Okay. And that's the supply.
We do have some monies, kind of annually, we always set aside in the capital budget, what Bob's referring to, for kind of annual maintenance of buildings and facilities. So we do have $15,000 currently in there. We can discuss.
So a question, so like on recreation, it doesn't have a page number, but salaries and benefits are 543, then maintenance and operation is 137. So, oh, what's 137?
So.
Is that, is that the loan?
No, so the, well, it just so happens those two numbers are about the same.
Yeah.
So on, on the slide I have pulled up, what I have is a breakdown in the right column of kind of the detail that makes up that $137,000. So currently in this budget, we have $34,000 for the Fourth of July program.
All of those. Oh, I'm sorry.
So if you were to sum up those, that's, that's how you'd get to the, the maintenance.
Oh, I thought those were other expenses, but those seems reasonable, but, but you put it all under maintenance and operations. Okay, okay. That's there. Ole, you have any questions or comments?
No.
No?
No.
The only question I had, which is just more of a technical, there's a rent fiber IT line item on the harbor operations that I don't see anywhere else. Is that just because harbor has a fiber?
Oh, yeah, that's it.
I know there is, that's something I'll have to confirm with Pat. I know there is a internet utilities charge to Fund 101.
Okay.
I don't know if there's a reason that one, well, it'd be separate, because I'm assuming it would be specific to the harbor, but I can, I can provide some additional detail as to what that is.
Thank you.
'Cause it would be just under general admin or something?
The, the kind of internet for, for City Hall would be under general admin likely in the, I would guess, general government category.
Separately, is all, I didn't know if it was a reason why it was called out separately.
Yeah. And then legal, you, you had $5,000, I think, in harbor, and then the rest is just kind of in general.
So, so the kind of general legal fees, and Denise or Mike could probably speak to this better, so a lot of the, either general issues that we involve BB&amp;K with, that kind of impact all funds, would be charged to that Fund 101 if there's, I believe there's $60,000 in the budget and planning, so a lot of the work that BB&amp;K does as far as, you know, preparing different planning documents or reviewing planning documents, I should say, we would charge those directly to that fund. So all the, the breakdowns, I provided Scott with a breakdown of kind of our historical, where we've budgeted city attorney costs, and he provided me his estimates for, for next year.
Okay.
So that would be, if there is a specific harbor-related legal issue, that's not necessarily a litigation. The litigation would be in the Fund 118.
Okay.
But the other harbor legal matter would kind of fall out of that.
Okay, 'cause, yeah, 'cause $5,000 didn't seem like a lot of money in the harbor fund, knowing what we've got.
Scott's giving us a good discount.
If I could speak to that, that is really, I get a call about transfer of moorings and stuff like that, and so I probably spend two hours, three hours a month on those issues, and that's just billed to harbor.
Okay. And so the, the only other total that I see for you is $135,000?
Um, there's, there's some in planning, and then there's maybe like, I think, a couple thousand in solid waste?
What, what I can do for the next meeting is provide a breakdown of all the legal costs. The three biggest ones are general admin, $135, planning of $60,000, and insurance of 30, but I think all said has came in this year, I think just shy of $300. But again, at the, the 24th meeting, I'll have a slide prepared.
I mean, the breakdown is, to me, just the, the number, and because looking at last year, or not maybe this COVID year, but the year before, what we, what were we historic?
What I, what I'll do is I'll provide that year-over-year comparison, and I can tell you that this year, legal fees are down considerably.
I know.
And that's reflected then in next year's budget, so hopefully we can keep that trend going.
I mean, a lot of that is just saying the word. You don't have to put it on a spreadsheet for me, you know, it's just.
I like putting it on a spreadsheet, though.
I mean, this is a lot of work that we do. I, you know, and then we got this one, too. So that's a lot of work.
Some fun reading, for sure.
Yeah.
This one's much better to read.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I know it's a lot of information, and I do appreciate this feedback, and if there are things I can show differently, and it doesn't have to be letting me know tonight, but offline as well, I'm happy to, each year that I've done this, I've kind of gotten a better sense of, of kind of how to convey the information, so I do think each year I'm getting a little better at presenting it, but I definitely appreciate the feedback, and even if it's not good feedback, it's something I can improve, I'll, I'll take it.
So what is the document? It's this, other than the, the graphs, these things with all your little account codes and whatever, that's what you live by?
That, that's ultimately what the department heads will be looking at when they decide what to charge, and so what I'll do is I'll pull up the document for all my fans watching at home.
I mean, that's how, remember the budget when I used to work, other than you have a lot more account codes 35 years later. But to me, to me, this is a helpful document to look, this is, this is, this is an easier document to look at, I think, for me. I mean, it's more fine, it's more specific, but then you can go, oh, I don't know, it's just easier.
So again, kind of my, my goal with kind of the overall layout is to begin with more of a narrative that kind of is what I touched on in the beginning of the presentation. And then what I tried to do is provide a, a summary by department, and that's what those kind of tables are.
Right.
And that way, if, if all you need to know is, so the fire department's $2 million in labor, $150,000 in supplies, and $400,000 in overhead, okay, no questions next. You don't have to go into the details, but if you want to go into the details, it's there as well. And so that's kind of the, the logic behind the, the flow.
Yeah.
Also, I think a helpful document, but I couldn't get it to fit nicely on a slide in the budget document, is a breakdown with employee titles, so you can really see if we're, if we're looking at public works in particular, where those changes in personnel actually occurred.
Yes, yes, that's a nice little.
And so that, that's in there to hopefully provide some more clarity as well.
Well, Cindy and, or Senya, do you have any comments on the budget or questions?
I just have, well, you, you answered one of them. I'm very concerned about public works and making sure that we have enough staff to handle what we need to. But then on the Five Corners Capital Improvements Project, what is the, what is the draw and the fund for?
So the, the Five Corners project, I believe we have about $250,000 or so budgeted. 80% of that or so is a grant match. The remaining $50,000 is a draw, but we're utilizing our SB1 funds. So if you look in the transfers, there's a $50,000 transfer from the street admin fund to the general fund, and that's to cover the portion of the Five Corners project that's not grant-funded. We're using those gas tax SB1 funds to, to use as that local match portion. Does that answer?
Yeah, it does. And then can we, just as a side note for city staff, can we get an update on the Five Corners project at the next meeting, or, or in a future meeting, near future meeting?
Yes, at the next study, well, we'll do an update at the next budget meeting.
Yeah, I'll be ready to update all that. I didn't hear that.
Bob was just saying that he'll be ready at the meeting on the 24th to go in more detail on the Five Corners if there are specific questions.
Okay, can, can we hold that to a regular council meeting, so the community can hear it? Because I sincerely doubt we're going to have very many people tuning in for a meeting midday.
We can definitely move that to a regular meeting.
Okay. Thanks so much.
And I just wanted to say that Bob Greenlaw did not in any way solicit my support for additional staff prior to this meeting or any other time. Right, Bob? I don't want Denise to think you were, you know, trying to bend my arm back here or anything. Okay.
So just to kind of recap, some of the, the, what I've taken down as notes is, at the next study session, I will look to include some additional public work staffing and show kind of what that cost is, as well as provide some options for how to, to cover those without dipping into reserves. Get more information on the rent fiber IT, provide a, a legal breakdown, and then the Five Corners update, which we'll, we'll do at a regular meeting. And then again, also, if there are any other questions between now and the 24th that we can prepare before the meeting, I'm happy to take those, if not tonight, at another time.
Great. Be good? Everybody good? All right. Michael, Captain, Oren, Ole, Bob, and Michael.
One, one other thing, at the meeting, I will also provide more detail on the cruise ship estimate, just in case there are any questions out there.
I mean, don't knock yourself out, but it might only be $40,000 or $50,000. I mean, you know.
That, that might pay for a public works employee.
Yeah, right, yeah, right.
Except I think we were looking in the other direction, but.
Wrong fund. And Denise, thank you very much. We miss you.
You're welcome, Mary. I did not think that you had been prompted by anybody either.
What's that?
I did not think that you had been prompted by anybody.
I know. Okay, here we go. Good night, Tony. Mean adjourned.
Good night, Tony.